I’ll call this meeting to order. Thank you, Ryan. We do have additional seating in the room directly behind us and the room directly behind here if you find it more comfortable to have a place to sit, but appreciate you all being here tonight. All right, we will start with roll call, please.
Michelle Brecken.
Here.
E.J. Donner.
Here.
Stephanie Ederman.
Here.
Randy Heydman.
Here.
Sarah Spear.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Great. We will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
I’ll second. Got a motion from Director Ward, a second from Director Brecken. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. We’ve got some recognitions here. There’s just a few, so if you guys are okay with it, I’ll just read them off here. Congratulations to the following: Ty Nelson for winning the state championship in the track and field triple jump, which is awesome; Brady Oslin for his ninth-place finish in the Minnesota State High School League State Golf Tournament and earning all-state honors; Maya Tausches for being named the 2425 Gatorade Minnesota Softball Player of the Year; Piper Werwas for her first-place finish at state for the VFW Art Contest. She’s moving on to the national competition. Congratulations. Staff member Mary Piwassit for being accepted into the Project Momentum’s K-12 ESL Additional Licensor Program. Mary was selected out of 100 applicants from more than 50 districts. Pretty awesome honor. And Athletics Director Jack Freeman for being named the Minnesota Interscholastic Activities Administrator Association’s MN AAA 2425 Regional Athletic Activity Administrator of the Year for Region 8AA.
That’s a long title.
Wow.
I should’ve looked at that ahead of time.
All right, we’ll move on to public input. A member of the public can address the board during this time. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Complaints or allegations against students or employees may not be discussed due to data privacy. Complaints or allegations must be submitted in writing to Superintendent Grant, and the Board of Education and Superintendent will not converse with guests to address the topics discussed at this time. So, we will start with Jessica Gangl, please.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I’m Jessica Gangl. I’m a parent of three Brainerd Public Schools students, a community member, and a proud Brainerd Warrior alumni. I care deeply about our schools and even more deeply about the future of the students we serve. We are fortunate to have a district that offers high-quality programs and a wide variety of opportunities to support every type of learner, but I’m increasingly concerned about what will happen if funding continues to fall short. We’re facing the potential loss of essential staff, reduced class offerings, and fewer extracurricular and co-curricular options, all of which directly impact our students. I’ve had the chance to speak with a few of you, one-on-one, and I truly appreciate your honesty and talking about your concerns. From those conversations, I believe there’s room for thoughtful compromise, a path forward that supports both fiscal responsibility and the need for additional funding streams for our school. Letting the community vote on a levy gives everyone a voice, allows parents, business owners, and taxpayers to decide what kind of investment they want to make in our children’s education and our shared future. Please consider bringing this decision to the voters. Let’s trust the community to make the choice on an operating levy this November. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jessica. Next up, we have Robert Colbenson. Hope I got that correct.
My name is Robert Colbenson. I live in Baxter. I just got a couple points. One is, is that a few years ago, the city council oversold, overbuilt, and now they’re overbudgeted. What I’m asking for is that you fix the problem, find out what the problem is, and resolve it, whatever went wrong. The other thing is, is I’m also asking, don’t dump it on the taxpayer. Try to do this in-house first. We know some of the things that haven’t worked out exactly the way that were planned, so... The other thing is, is I also ask is, don’t say, “Well, it’s all about the children.” I’ve supported the children for 50 years in this district. I’m all about the children. And the other thing is, is if it’s going to go for a vote for a levy, I don’t have an issue with that, but do it during the general election. Don’t do this off-year nonsense. Are you afraid of the turnout? Probably, that’s the only explanation I got. So, those are my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next up, we have Mark Olson.
Got a lot of things to say, not much time. MDE, Minnesota Department of Education. Did you guys know that they hired a person at a high-level position that just got terminated because he was a sex offender, and he was investigated by ICE? And you guys listened to Minnesota Department of Education? You gotta be kidding me. How about the policy of disrupting of students? I just talked to two teachers, grade-school teachers, and that policy is still there, where a disruptive student is in the classroom, and you move the whole classroom out. And you wonder why that kids can’t learn. How about this one? A third of the space in all your schools is not used. Nisswa, built for 425. It houses 248 right now. Garfield, 425, 251 right now. Riverside, 625, and you house 405. You’ve lost 1,000 students. I wonder why. Well, here’s a reason. We came here two years ago, talked to you guys about pornographic books. Don’t know if they ever got out of this school. Maybe they did, maybe they didn’t. But a man sitting here, Mr. Ward, and a past chairman lectured us about bringing this position to you guys about pornographic books. Maybe that’s the reason you’ve lost 1,000 students. How about this one? I did a data request. Do you know, out of 15 people, where assistant principals and principals, $2,700,000 you spend every year? $225,000 for the high, 169 for the low, an average of $178,000. How about District 181 that was mentioned here? The policy on the big, beautiful thing that you guys did in 2018. You sold it as 205 million. It’s going to be close to 300 million. Do your research. It’s going to happen because of why? Because of the interest payments. Nobody talks about that. Now, the operating levy. Huh. Money doesn’t fix all things. Fix the problems. It’s not about money. First Timothy 6:10 says, “The love of money is the root of all evil.” In 2006, I ran for the school board. Two people, Reed Campbell, Ruth Kerminder, said, “Mark, you’re on the right track.” Ruth Kerminder retired after I showed her what was happening, and you guys are on that same path. What is it? You have to address the elephant in the room. It’s teachers’ salaries and their benefit package. Check that out. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, we have Michael Erickson, please.
I don’t want to speak in my three minutes.
Thank you. I graduated from Brainerd in 1974. We just had our 50th class reunion last year. That really doesn’t mean that I’m old. History was not my strong suit when I went to school, but I do remember one of the things that they taught us, and I’m not quite sure why they taught us that other than for this moment in time. The Boston Tea Party. The Boston Tea Party happened December 16, 1773. The colonists, who were called the Sons of Liberty at that time, were basically upset with Britain because they were being taxed without representation. They were being told what to do without having a voice in the matter. Now, the context is different, but the principle is the same at this point in time regarding a possible levy vote. Okay. The community should be able to have a voice in the matter. Now, in the history books, it was important enough that they put the Boston Tea Party in. It was one of the precursors of the Revolutionary War. We should not have a situation where the public does not have input into this matter. If the public votes no for a levy, fine. If the public votes yes for a levy, fine. I have a preference. You don’t need to be surprised what my preference is, okay? But I want to vote. That’s the main issue. If you stand up at the beginning of your meetings and say, “The Pledge of Allegiance to that flag,” the Revolutionary War was based on those simple principles. The people should have the opportunity to have their voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next up, we have Mary Holbrook. Is she in the back room? Somebody making a announcement back there? Thank you.
Sarah, why don’t you call the next person so they’re ready?
They’re coming.
Thanks. She’s on her way. I see her. Thank you.
I wiped out a few toes there. Hi. My name is Mary Holbrook, and I live in Nisswa, Minnesota. And my husband and I came to this community 25 years ago, and I thought I would share with you what brought us here and what keeps us here. First of all, it was family. Yes, I have a couple of grandkids in the school district. Second of all, was the health system, and unfortunately, yes, we are using that a lot more these days, as you can tell, my hair color. And thirdly, was the educational system, both Brainerd High School and Central Lakes College. We’ve taken in and enjoyed activities and performances in both. And to us, a key measure of the health and vitality of a community is its educational system. Now, I’m on a fixed income, so of course I have some concerns. And because of that, I want to be able to know in detail what happens if we don’t pass this referendum for an operating levy, and I want to know in detail what happens if we do. I don’t know right now how I would vote, but I want the opportunity to hear, see, discuss, question all the data surrounding this question in a thoughtful manner, with time enough to give it full consideration. At this stage in my life, I can share with you, and you probably maybe have guessed this, but our kids grew up in a very small and poor school district that managed somehow to pass a referendum. And looking back, I cannot give you in detail how much taxes we paid. It was, I’m sure, a stretch. We were a young family. But I can tell you in detail, name after name, of students whose lives were elevated by a caring community that supported their education and laid groundwork for their success in life. Please give me and every other voter in this district the opportunity to fully consider this referendum for our students of today. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Up next, we have Katie Marsh.
Good evening, members of the board. I have three children in the Brainerd School District, and they have benefited from the amazing teachers and administrators at Nisswa Elementary and Lowell Elementary through the AGIT program. And next year, we will have one starting at Forest View. I’m here as a concerned parent and member of this community. Oh, I just started. So, yeah, so I’m here as a member of the community, and most importantly, as someone who believes in the right of the people to have a say in the future of our schools, I want to urge this board to bring the levy to the ballot and let the voters decide. Right now, three members of this board have made a decision that will deeply impact thousands of students, parents, and staff. If this levy is not placed on the ballot, we are facing real and painful cuts to teachers' programs, transportation, and maybe even safety measures at our schools. And with those cuts comes a very real possibility that more students will leave our district and more long-term damage to our public schools. Our family open and rolls into the Brainerd School District because of the unique educational opportunities, and our family is not alone. When you hear those numbers, some people are coming to this district. Not everybody is leaving. My children are already bracing for cuts and changes at Lowell: elimination of the Spanish program, not rehiring the science teacher, and letting go of the music teacher. We’ve also heard about the falling test scores, but cutting programs and understaffing classrooms won’t raise achievement. Investment will. Investment brings more students and families to the district. With the resources this levy could provide, we could strengthen core education, core instruction, support struggling learners, and raise our scores. Without a vote on the levy, we don’t even have a chance. The bottom line to all of this, this is bigger than three individuals. Our schools belong to this entire community, and the community deserves a voice. Refusing to even let this come to a vote sends a message that the public can’t be trusted, and our voice doesn’t matter. This community deserves the right to weigh in, and placing a levy on the ballot does not guarantee a tax increase. It just gives the public the choice. To deny that choice and allow just a few individuals to make the decision with far-reaching consequences is not just short-sighted, it’s undemocratic. Give our community the right to stand up for our kids, our teachers, and our public education system. They deserve that right. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. All right, next up, we have Izzy and Ally Birkovet, please.
Good evening. My name is Ally Birkovet. I’m a Brainerd parent, a business owner, and a weekly volunteer in our schools for the last nine years. I’m also a member of the Baxter PTO. I’m here tonight with my daughter Izzy to speak plainly about what we’re seeing, what we’re experiencing, and what we’re asking you to do. Your request is simple. I’m here tonight to ask you to let our community vote. Kids are already feeling the consequences of cuts that have been made, and families are left wondering what’s next as opportunities quietly disappear. We can’t wait until this gets worse. The time to act is now. But stop pretending this is a political debate. It’s not. It’s a question of whether we value educational enough to keep it strong even when the numbers get tight. Meanwhile, students are already feeling the consequences, and I want to give Izzy a chance to explain what that looks like from her perspective.
Hi, I’m Izzy, and I am going into fifth grade at Forest View this year. I love learning, especially reading. Every week, I finish books that are over 800 pages long. I tested into the 95th percentile for reading. I’ve always really looked forward to being in the accelerated reading class at Forest View, but I didn’t get in because there just wasn’t enough room. There used to be two accelerated sections. Now, there’s only one, and it has 36 kids in it. I’m not sad, I’m just disappointed. I did the work. I showed I was ready, but the opportunity was already stolen. That’s frustrating, not just for me, but for a lot of other students who are doing their best and still being told there’s not enough space. And when things like this happen, we talk about it. We notice, and we start asking, what else are we going to lose next?
What exactly will be cut next? What’s the plan? Because right now, no one knows, and that’s just unacceptable. Izzy isn’t the only one. She represents hundreds of students across this district, kids who are falling through the cracks because we’re operating in scarcity mode. As a business consultant and a marketing strategist, I can tell you this: When a business hits hard times, they can either cut until they collapse, or they can strategically invest in growth. The organizations that weather storms aren’t the ones who slash everything and hope for the best, they’re the ones that focus on bringing in more, more opportunities, more visibility, and more alignment with what their community values. And right now, we need more. If this board is supposed to be pro-education, pro-student, pro-community, and we know that as a school board member, your job description includes strategic planning, community engagement, and educational leadership, that’s where your focus should be, not digging your heels and prove alliance to one political party or to the other. That’s a race to the bottom for all of us. We’ve already seen the impact of cuts, and now we need to know, what’s your strategy to build us back up?
I know I’m only one student, but I think what’s happening affects a lot of us. It’s about students starting to feel like they don’t have the same chances that kids have had before us. We already went through a lot with COVID, and we’re finally getting back to normal. But now, the things that make school special, like electives, challenges, and extra support, are starting to disappear. Please let the people vote on the levy. Please give us a chance to keep Brainerd strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Izzy. All right, so next up, we have Karen Knudsen, please.
I am here because, or I’m speaking because I’m just looking at, okay, you’ll never solve a problem unless you identify it. Brainerd schools need to alleviate the debt and provide a sustainable budget that provides excellence in education. And I do agree that if you do a levy, you need to tell the public what the money is going to be spent on. I asked a local Christian school principal for feedback about the reason given for the children leaving the Brainerd Public School District, and these were the responses. I’m a messenger. I’m not saying this is not my opinion, but the opinions of the students and the parents, and those schools are, they have people on waiting lists to get in as our children are leaving. So, it’s good to look at this, because you don’t solve a problem unless you identify it. These are the responses from parents and students. There are many variables for why the families are escaping from Brainerd. What I heard most, of course, this is a principal speaking, is the liberal agenda. But another huge thing is a lack of discipline in the classroom. Also, there’s a severe lack of expectations for students’ success in many areas. Everything was dumbed down. Everything is digital, so there’s limited engagement with books and with experiential learning. The environment is very institutionalized. Teachers are stripped of all power in the classroom, and there’s not respect for teachers from the students. Also, the leadership does not support the teachers. There are so many things wrong. What is inhibiting their recovery is an unwillingness to address the actual problem or even admit that they have a serious problem. Specifically, from a kid perspective or from the mouths of the children, it was said, they do not feel safe at all in their Brainerd schools. They’re even afraid to go to the bathroom. Safety is a basic human need. They say they do not feel loved, accepted, or like they belong. And like I said, this is not me speaking, this is actual children that have been in our district. I also have a direct, something for, Sarah, I just wanted to ask you, I’m looking at the Minnesota School Board Association legal requirements for school board members, and it says that a conflict of interest as a board member, if you have a personal financial interest in the sale, lease, or contract with the district, and there’s two Minnesota statutes, and I copied them, and I have them for the group if they would like to look at them, but I’m thinking about, you are the vice president of marketing for Sourcewell, and I noticed last time, there were a lot of Sourcewell people here. And these statutes, I asked a lawyer about it, and he said that it does appear that if you are voting on something where you get a contract...
Thank you, Karen.
...it’s a conflict of interest. So, I’ll leave these with you. Okay?
Up next, we have Kate Keepers, please.
My name is Kate Keepers, and I have two daughters who attend ISD 181, and a daughter who graduated in 2025, or 2022, sorry. I want to thank each of you for your service to our community. However, I am concerned with the direction this board is taking when it comes to upcoming financial shortfalls in the budget and not allowing an operating levy to go to community vote. While you are elected to make decisions on behalf of the community, I am concerned you are doing so without listening to the majority of your constituents, parents of ISD 181 students. One statistic that keeps being mentioned is that we’ve lost 997 kids. I went back and researched, in 2013, we already had lost 600 kids opting out of the district. So, that means in the past 11 years, we’ve lost an additional 374 students. Don’t get me wrong, the decrease in students is concerning and something that needs to be addressed, but if you’re discussing making, cutting based on that 997 number, it’s uninformed policymaking, especially considering cuts that have already taken place. Another number that no one mentions is the 400-plus students who opt into our district. We live in Pillager School District. My husband and I drive our kids 25 minutes one way every day to Brainerd because we feel it offers the best education in the area. Our daughter is excited to take an engineering class. It was said that we may need to cut classes like this, but I see those as career exploration and readiness opportunities for our students. One class that was mentioned being cut was creative foods, but I would guess that local resorts and restaurant owners would strongly disagree with you as they have a chef shortage that’s lasted for over 10 years. Employee compensation was discussed. Teachers are highly educated professionals who deserve to make a decent salary. Sartell, Detroit Lakes, Bemidji, Sauk Rapids, and Hibbing all have the same average salary as Brainerd or higher. Pillager has our same benefits package. It’s been said that upcoming cuts will not affect the classroom, but some of you have been on the Finance Committee for years, and if there were options that don’t affect the classroom to be cut, why hasn’t it been done? Why have we cut EA’s, interventionists, literacy coaches, and not hired for open positions? These are significant cuts that have affected the classroom, and they are the reason I’m hearing from parents that people are choosing other schools. We are not alone in needing an operating levy. Over 73% of districts in Minnesota have one, including Pillager and Pequot. It is a bigger problem than just cutting. You have a superintendent that was chosen for his expertise with levies. You all voted to spend $20,000 on a survey, and then you ignored the results. That is a waste of taxpayer dollars. They are similar to a line, if you were to get a levy to pass, which we’re not advocating for, just the opportunity, you do not need to use those dollars. It is similar to a line of credit. You have the power to lower the levy rate and not increase taxes if you don’t need it. Levies are a way for local communities to directly support their schools and have a say in the quality of education provided. Come up with a plan, work together, let the community say what they’ll support. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. We can refrain from applause. Thank you. Ruby Shaw, please.
I want to keep this short because there’s a lot of people here, so all I have to say is let the people vote.
Thank you, Ruby. Please, folks, I know it’s hard not to, but please, if we could refrain from applause, that would be great. Doug Kern, please.
I’m really glad that Marcy Lord will be giving the lowdown on if it passes or doesn’t pass here after the public comments. I think that’s awesome, because they’ll give a better heads-up of what we got. So, I really appreciate that. March 15, the Brainerd Dispatch article, it said, “With the presidential executive orders calling all diversity, equity, and inclusion programs unlawful under civil rights law, Brainerd school board members discuss updated language for district initiatives. They plan to come up with a new name for the board’s Equity Task Force with concerns about potential federal funding impacts. President Trump’s executive order regarding DEI had nothing to do against bullying the physically handicapped or mentally challenged individuals. The executive order was issued to stop boys from competing with girls in sports, which is a Title IX violation. I got eight sisters, I know about Title IX. Instead of eliminating all references to DEI, this may cost Independent School District 181 by losing over six...” 181 by losing over $6 million in federal funding. We have been told that DEI, critical race theory, is not in the schools, but we have an Equity Task Force to implement it. And the name change is the solution that's not a solution. In October of 2021, our high school principal told the previous board, the student council, wanted to have a homecoming, for homecoming, two kings or two queens to be more inclusive. That resulted in students boycotting the homecoming dance, and they had their own dance at Northern Pacific. Some of you guys were here, some of you weren't. In June 2023, we had challenges to pornography available to our students. The challenge failed even after reading the explicit porn during public comments from many books, and I thank Gail, she's in the audience here, for reading the books. To put the children, to put this in children's classrooms and libraries with the notions that men can have babies, and there's nothing unusual about changing your sex you were born with, promoting child sexual exploitation like it's perfectly normal, the book, plant seeds of confusion in young minds. Then there was the discussion about the Minnesota Student Survey designed for grades 5 through 11 in April. This survey includes highly invasive questions, many which are sexual in nature. An example, how do you describe your sexual orientation? Choices include straight, bisexual, pansexual, queer, et cetera. What's your gender identity? The choices include non-binary, two-spirit, gender-fluid, et cetera. Again, seeds of confusion, where are our tax, where are our taxpayer dollars well-spent? We teach our children that God created Adam and Eve. I'm a Sunday school teacher of almost 40 years, I'm an educator. And the DEI tells them that it could have been Adam and Steve, or Eve and Bonnie. Humanism at its finest, that's what it is. And it says, you can be the God you deserve to be, just like the original line that Adam and Eve had.
Up next, we have, thank you. We have Chloe Baker, please.
Hi, my name is Chloe Baker. I am a proud Brainerd alumni. I grew up in this district, I graduated from these schools, I am proud to call Brainerd home and proud of the education I received here. Now, as a parent with kids in this very same district, I want to keep that pride alive, not just for myself, but for them. In fact, my son's photo is in the back of this room. I want my kids to have every opportunity to learn, grow, explore their interests, and feel supported in school, not to see those opportunities slowly chipped away by cuts. When we talk about what draws families to Brainerd schools, it's not test scores on a sheet, it's the stories parents tell each other, the way teachers go the extra mile, the diverse programs that light a spark in kids. Word of mouth is powerful. If we start losing electives, if classrooms grow too large, if support staff continue to disappear, people notice, and they take their families elsewhere. I may not be a teacher in this district, but as a parent, I can only imagine how heavy it must feel to be asked to do more with less, to see vital resources and supports pulled away from kids you care about every single day. Putting a levy on the ballot is not about forcing an outcome, it's about letting our community decide what kind of schools and what kind of future we want here. I want to keep being proud of this district, not because we managed to get by with less, but because we invested in our kids. Please, give us the chance to make that decision together as a community. Put it on the ballot and let us vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Chloe. Next up, we have Rick Felts, please.
My name is Rick Felts, Brainerd, Minnesota. In 1849, Minnesota started property tax nine years before becoming a state for 100% funding in the public school system. In 1967, the state of Minnesota turned it back over to the counties because tens of thousands of people were losing their homes. So they actually implemented a state sales tax and a Minnesota income tax to help alleviate that problem. 69% of that tax right now goes through schools and law enforcement, 31% goes to the county roads and employees. Right now, since 1967, we have 105,000 acres of tax-forfeited land in Crow Wing County alone. So don't tell me that people are being suffered from losing their property over this issue. We had an $18 billion surplus in Minnesota two years ago, now an $8 billion deficit, and we're only halfway through the year. That's a $26 billion shift. Federal government, we're $2 trillion in debt every single year with a $36 trillion unfunded liability. We have 100, in school district 181, we now have $3 million in debt. All three of those, federal government, state government, and local government have one thing in common, they refuse to reconcile a budget. My taxes, my property taxes have gone up 58% the last four years, that's a $1,200 increase. And I was offended when Peter Grant said just last month that, two months ago, that he saw a lot of gray hair out here and everything, but, but he doesn't have any trouble taking my $3,200 a year for this funding. Also, I think it's also unfair that every single tax property owner is directed for this tax. That does not include every single person that has children in this thing. So we also have to look at that. When we pass that levy, now we're over $300 million in debt to rebuild schools, and 1,000, 1,000 students have left since that time. Minnesota is now top six in taxes in the, in the 50-state area, and we're also top six for businesses and people leaving the state of Minnesota. The two reasons that they're giving is because of high taxes, crime rates, and, and other situations. I also did some of my research on private schools when I contacted them. The number one reason for everybody, that every single school, private school system gave me was the woke agenda. They said that was the most infuriating thing, that all of the people that were bringing their kids to that system. Number two was safety, just as Karen Knudsen said. We had children that were literally holding their bodily functions, refusing to go to the bathroom because they were terrified of getting beat up in the bathrooms. In Forest View School, we had a teacher's aide that was assaulted in Forest View, requiring serious knee surgery, and no discipline for the student. Not one complaint or of a large class size or lack of funding was ever given to the, to the private school system. They are now enrolling their kids in a larger class size than what they had here.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Ed Shaw, please.
Ed Shaw, Brainerd, a parent of two children in Forest View, one of which you heard from a few minutes ago, you know, also a small business owner here in town. And heard about a lot of things in the discussion, books should be banned, books, are gay people a problem, are trans people a problem? Is the city council doing something bad? The Department of Education, the federal government, the state government, none of that really matters. They're not here. This is the school board in our community. Whatever one thinks about various policies and what we should do, the issue is how are we going to fund our schools, and who is, more importantly, who is going to decide that? As my daughter said, put it to the point, let us decide. There's some different arguments in this group, there's some different opinions, there's some different opinions in this community. There's certainly a lot of people who want their schools to be adequately funded. I get being frugal. I've been a business owner for 30 years. I'm, some people would call me cheap, I've never bought a new car in my life, but sometimes you have to spend money. You cannot, you have to invest. I invest in my business. You know, you have to invest the community in things that you value, and you have to look at investing in your schools, like anything else. And, you know, we have had a good district here for a long time. You know, people come, people, people tell me they move here because of the schools. That's an asset to everybody, that's an asset to every business owner, everybody in the community. But bottom line, let us decide. The six of you up there, directors, you know, give your credit for what you're doing, you've all got your opinions, but let us out here decide, you know, we're the people, we can decide, we don't bite, not too often at least. Let us make the call, give us at least that much respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Next up, we have Christopher Fagderud, please.
I have my teacher shirt on, but I'd like you to just imagine that I put my dad hat on, because I'm very proud to be a teacher in the Brainerd Public School System, even more proud to have my son as a second grader next year, and my daughter going into kindergarten at Lowell next year. And I, honestly, I was really nervous. I talk in front of thousands of people all the time, I'm a musician, but I'm really nervous to talk to the seven of you, because this is really important. And the only thing that gave me the courage to come up here was Izzy and Ruby. I thought if they could do it, then I could come up here. And the first word on the Brainerd Public Schools logo is opportunity, and you've listened to many people who just wanted the opportunity. The opportunity to vote, to say yes or no, that's all they wanted. My student, my kids want the same opportunities that past students have had. Many of you have had your kids go through the school system and are, have had great opportunities, and my kids deserve the same opportunities. Sometimes it's our, as adults, we want to give our kids even more than what we had, right? That's a goal. We don't want to give them less than what our kids had, we want to give them more than we had. And you have the opportunity to do that. You can give opportunity, give opportunity to voters, give opportunities to our kids. And you also, it's okay, you have the opportunity to change your mind. The people I respect the most in my life take and weigh heavy issues, and they get different opinions, and they change their mind. It's okay. It's actually the mark of a leader to change their mind. So you have opportunity to give opportunity. Thank you for being here and dealing with these hard questions. It's not easy for anybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Next up, we have Jeannie Foss, please.
Hi, I wasn't going to speak today, but I, I was asked, and I think that it's important that we all say our, our reason why we're here. I'm an owner of five local businesses, I have two kids currently in the Brainerd High School District, two recent grads, one's in the Navy, one's in dental school. We moved here in 2004 to start our businesses and heard from other business owners that it was a great place to raise your kids. I cannot say enough about the, how hard all the teachers are trying to allow our students' success on a regular basis, regardless of their name, background, economic status, et cetera. I surveyed other parents before coming here tonight, and business owners, and they all said the same thing, trust the teachers, ask the teachers what they need. So I've asked the teachers, they, they wanted us here for support, and they want to have more opportunity. They volunteer so much already of their time and money to the students in our community. Business owners rely on the health of schools for their local business success, mine included. The first question that we always get from people that we're trying to recruit as new doctors is, how is the school system? I have many new patients moving to our area every month, we need to keep them here. Our schools don't have enough, they're starving. We don't have indoor spring training sports facilities like a lot of the city's school, but yet we play them. We don't have early language programs, and that is something that even I had in a small school where I had 58 people in my class. We don't have extra staff for disability learning. We have class sizes of 28. If you want to run a successful business, you need to reinvest over and over for optimal growth. A business that constantly cuts the wages of employees and penny pinches is essential, in essential areas are killing that business, and their employees are walking on eggshells, who's always worried about they might lose their job. And nobody needs that kind of stress, our teachers don't need that kind of stress, our students don't need that kind of a stress. We earn the right to vote in a community that we care about. A good leader bridges the gap. We find ways to make both sides find common grounds. Our teachers, our kids need their teachers and the community that supports them. The best stock option that we have to invest in is our children and our schools. How many businesses want these kids to move back to the area after they go off and leave the area? I know I do. I want my kids to come back. With inflation and growth, come costs for all of us, and we should, and that should not be dismissed. But a good leader figures out how to lead a community to success, not its demise.
Thank you, Jeannie. Next up, we have Beth Holbrook, please.
Hi, I'm the mom of two Brainerd High School students, a ninth grader and a senior. And to be honest, I don't really want to be here today. I worked until 2:00 AM last night, and I haven't seen my kids for two days. I'd really rather be at home with them, probably getting ready for bed. But this one, this issue, this issue is too important to sit out. I'm asking that you please allow the community to vote on an operating levy. And it's also important enough that this is my first school board meeting I've ever attended. So I chose to move to this district 16 years ago, precisely because of the quality of the education. I grew up in a small town not too far away from here, and Brainerd was the envy of the area. They had so many opportunities that I did not have in my small school district. I've been proud of this district, I don't think you guys hear that enough, I've been proud of Brainerd School District, and I've been proud of the opportunities it has afforded my kids. I'm concerned that more cuts will affect the quality of their education, and not only the opportunities for my kids, but the opportunities for all kids in this district. I've heard some of the directors say that they can come up with a way to address this $3 million shortfall without affecting the quality of education. That's great. Let's see your plan, and have a vote on whether we want to go ahead with your proposed cuts, or whether we want to fund the district so that it can continue to provide the level of services that it currently provides. And finally, I want to address something that Director Dondelenger said to me today. He said, "This is a republic and not a democracy," which is why the school board doesn't need to take this issue of an operating levy to the voters. But rather than being dismissive of the people who want a choice, I think the board should feel incredibly grateful that the community is invested in the school district and feels passionate about public education. Please let us have our voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Next, we have Amy Gunblock, please.
Does she have a leave with her kids?
Okay, thank you. We will move on to Melissa Schmeck.
I know some of you are tired of hearing me speak, but I was raised to stand up for what I believe in. I was taught that if you're not willing to speak up and be part of the solution, then you don't have the right to complain. So I'm here again, not to complain, but to advocate. I've been a teacher for over 20 years. I have a master's degree in special education, and have completed all of my professional development credits. Yes, I am at the top of the pay scale. And yes, I've heard that some board members believe teachers are paid too much. Honestly, that's defeating. I work incredibly hard, coming in early, staying late, coming in on weekends, going above and beyond every single day, and I'm not the exception. This is the norm for so many dedicated educators in our district. It's disheartening to hear some board members feel overwhelmed by phone calls and emails from the community because they have their own jobs. But being on a school board is a public service. Hearing from the people you serve is part of the job. It's also frustrating to hear talk about kicking the can down the road, especially when 73%, 73% of school districts in Minnesota already have operating levies in place. This isn't about delay, it's about survival. On top of that, we've heard comparisons that our schools should be run like a business. With all due respect, that might make sense if we were chasing profits, but we're not, we're shaping lives. Schools weren't just built for kids, they're sustained by the dedicated educators and staff who give everything they have for those kids every single day. To suggest that the adults working in our schools are in it for themselves is not only wrong, it's deeply insulting. No one chooses a career in education unless they care deeply about kids. We are here because of the kids. There's also been a lot of misinformation shared with the public. Yes, we've lost some students, but no one is talking about how many families have chosen to open and enroll their kids into our district, because they believe the education, they believe in the education we're providing. I've heard it said that the vote is sneaky because it's not an election year. But our responsibility to students doesn't follow an election cycle. We show up every day, regardless of the calendar. But our responsibility to students doesn't follow an election cycle. We show up every day regardless of the calendar. We work hard, we care deeply, and we shouldn't have to fight this hard for something that should be a no-brainer. All we're asking is that you let the community decide. By voting no, you're sending a clear message that you don't value the educators who are working harder than we have ever worked before for our kids, who we love deeply. We're not here to fight against anyone. We're fighting for something. Please let the community have a vote or voice. Let the community decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next up, we have Tricia Riley, please.
Hello, my name is Tricia Riley and I'm a proud parent of two BHS students and a taxpayer of ISD 181. I'm speaking today in hope specifically that board members Donderlinger, Ederman, and Heidman will reconsider their position and allow the community to vote on an operating levy. I want to be clear, allowing the community to vote does not guarantee that the levy will pass, but it does allow for the democratic process to play out and for the community at large to decide what we're able and willing to support. Voting in the democratic process is the foundation of who we are on a national, state, and local level. It's how all of you obtained your seat on this very school board. And there is no reason why the operating levy shouldn't follow this process and be a community vote. I also believe there is room for compromise. As the board, you can allow the community to vote on an operating levy and make other budget decisions to get us in a more fiscally secure position. It doesn't have to be one or the other. I've emailed board members and I've received responses on why they're not supporting the levy vote, like there is much room for improvement without increasing class sizes and we need drastic changes to the district that should have very little effect on our kids. I ask these board members to be forthcoming on how the district can achieve this without affecting student outcomes. What is the board's and the district's actual plan and what is going to be cut? The community, staff, and students deserve to know. ISD 181 students also deserve the best from the adults that make decisions on their education. We need to be able to look them in the eye and know as a school board, community, and educators, we've explored all funding options to ward off the most extreme cuts. Allowing the community to vote, whether the levy passes or fails, is that option. Please consider allowing taxpayers and parents to have a say in our community and our schools. Put the operating levy on the November ballot and allow us to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Up next, we have Jeff Chesick, please.
Thank you. So I listened to the, the last regular meeting and I have to say that the audience members, the vast, vast majority of them were correct. The people should be allowed to vote. And they did in 2022 when they elected Randy and DJ, and again last year when they elected Stephanie Ederman. Thank God for that. This school district, like most every other one, is always ruled by a liberal majority. Now, we've had a couple of conservative board members, however, they can't push back because they're in minority. Now we're at an impasse. And by definition, I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding here. It's up to the board to decide if you're going to allow the voters to vote on a referendum and when. How hard is that for people to understand? The decision was made. And you call it not a decision because there's not a majority. This is our firewall, thank God, Randy, DJ, and Stephanie. Because it always goes away, liberals. And oh, it's not political. Yes, it is. Sorry, folks, it's political. We all know it. Just admit it. It's political at its core. You all know it. And you're tired, it's tiring. So we have a backstop, a firewall. And these three board members, just so you know, there's a lot of people in this community that are standing behind you. Sure, they come out in masks because they organized with Heidi Hahn and cake keepers back on the 16th of September out at the Old Prairie Bay. They get their posters made and they come in, they're like petulant children who can't take no for an answer. A couple of house cleaning items, housekeeping items. It was stated that the referendum vote and special election would cost $10,000. In 2018, it cost 25, or $50,000. The board resolved to have, there's half the polling places. So it made it more difficult for people to find their polling place. And since then, the election judges' wages that I think have increased twice. So just by that alone in the last four years of high inflation, that's not going to lower the cost of that $50,000. That's in your records, the $50,000. And you know, we hear a lot of gnashing of teeth and stomping of feet and raising of voices saying, "I'm not going to stand for this." Well, Sarah, it, it, it's the way it is. We have a three-to-three impasse. Move on, help DJ, Randy, and Stephanie with their ideas. Some of their ideas just get ignored. You don't want to work on stuff together. You want to get in the way only until it goes your way. And that's tiring. You see this all the time. An idea comes up, you can't even change the name of a couple of dates on a calendar. This whole woke-ism, this whole, everything about it is just failing and you refuse to do anything about it. John, you talk about the, the morality, the morale of the school district. Check the taxpayers' morale.
Appreciate it.
Check theirs. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Laura Gervey, please.
Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Laura Gervey. I'm a second grade teacher as well as a mom to three kids who are proud Brainerd warriors. We've been a part of this district since we moved here nine years ago. And over those nine years, I've witnessed support and resources being removed year after year from the students and the staff of ISD 181. My two girls had a full-time classroom EA when they were in kindergarten. My second daughter being the last class to have them before they were another budget cut. Our youngest, my son, wasn't so lucky. He has never known what it's like to have that support in the classroom. The past two years, when he was in second and third grade, he's been part of a class of 29 students. It should come as no surprise that he struggles to be successful in school. And trust me, it's not for lack of effort on his teacher's part or lack of extra time put in by his teacher mom on nights and during the summer. Those class, those class sizes should alarm people. There's no way that valuable learning can take place when there's one adult and almost 30 primary age students. Read any of the research that has been published about class sizes and student achievement. We're setting our students up for failure. We are setting our teachers up for failure. I see the level of burnout amongst my colleagues and it's so heartbreaking. Amazing educators are hanging on by a thread and begging for you to see us and acknowledge our pleas. At last month's board meeting, I listened to so many intelligent people, many of whom are tied to education in one way or another, and all of whom are very decorated in their career and respected by this community, sit in front of you and give you reason upon reason as to why our community deserves to get to vote on this and why it is so needed for our schools and for our students. It was so disappointing to watch a few of you ignore their expertise. It's not uncommon for a school district of our size to rely on a levy to keep things operating efficiently and effectively. The answer is pretty simple. If we want better student performance, which we know is tied to lower class sizes and more student supports in place, operating levy. If we want higher test scores and for teachers to have more support in the classroom, operating levy. If we want to stay competitive with surrounding districts and keep electives in the high school, operating levy. The fact that some of you are saying no is beyond my comprehension. An operating levy is not political. It's your job, it's not your job to silence the voices from being heard. And our community definitely wants to be heard. It's your job to listen to the voices of the community and make our school district progress and be the best that it can be. As a teacher, I have a responsibility to facilitate my students' learning, to help them grow, to love them, and make them feel safe and valued. Your responsibility is to the betterment of this district and to provide students and staff with the best possible chance at being successful. If you have ever looked any of us in the face...
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Up next, we have Connie Lissio, please.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to all of us. I know a bit of the information can no doubt be redundant, but I do have a few things that might be a little bit of a different perspective. As a teacher of 30-plus years in this district and now having served on the Baxter City Council for over six years, I may have a unique understanding and an appreciation of having to make decisions that affect our entire community. They're hard. Many times while serving on council, I would have welcomed the opportunity to allow stakeholders, the citizens, a vote. Why wouldn't I? I was never afraid. There have also been times when I entered a meeting believing I had made up my mind, my mind, how I planned to vote on an agenda item, only to change my mind after I listened to the citizens who cared enough to attend a meeting and share their beliefs based on facts. Listening to hear, not just giving lip service, is a necessity at times. And it takes strength and courage to change your mindset and your vote. Superintendent Bob Gross, who I'm sure many of us are aware, certainly he's legendary as an educator, once shared a lesson he learned. Early on in his career and as a Toffel German, he always felt he saw no need for a school district to offer counseling and mental health services at school. Something I've been told is on the cutting floor. As our students and families' needs changed, so did his mindset of all people. There are few if any educational leaders more highly respected than he. I hear about these cuts and possibly that of the extracurricular activities potentially happening, and it scares me. I too just had a major class reunion. Our memories were not centrally located to what happened in the classroom. The majority are the extracurricular offerings. That is mental health and wellness. We seem to be losing our democracy one vote at a time. Please allow the community to vote on a levy in November. Mr. Gross would also say, "Are we the school district that eats dust or are we going to be the one that makes dust?" Please let ISD 181 be a leader in the state as it always has been. Don't allow us to choke on that said dust. Our kids are so worth it. And as I'm making my way up here, our district, just in this classroom, has more gifted, educated, and caring teachers and school staff than some towns have in their entire district. I hope you appreciate them.
Thank you, Connie. Next up, we have Tony Bauer, please.
Good evening. I too was under the impression that a three-three vote on a proposal by this board effectively killed that proposal, which is why I don't understand why it would be discussed again, let alone reconsidered. Let's dispel some of the falsehoods being thrown around by some. Many here would have you believe that this is a voting issue, as in a fundamental right. First, this is not a voting rights issue. Citizens did vote. They voted to elect this school board to make decisions. This is a responsible use of tax dollars issue. And this district has demonstrated that it cannot be trusted with the carte blanche nature of an operating levy without oversight. Second, there is absolutely no correlation between tax dollars thrown at education and improvements in student scores and performance. In fact, quite the opposite has been demonstrated here in Brainerd, in Minnesota, and many other states. In the past, this district has set goals for the number of students to be, to be assessed for test scores, but no goals to actually raise the test scores. Third, the financial pickle this district finds itself in is a direct result of reckless and irresponsible decisions and spending by a previous board and superintendent. Brainerd schools foolishly borrowed against future government enrollment dollars only to see an actual decline in students. Many policies and decisions like COVID masking and sexually explicit and inappropriate books being intentionally made available to students force many parents to decide to pull their children in favor of other options. Ask these major spending questions during even numbered general election years. Many will say they are bound by Minnesota law to pursue these dangerous practices. But in ISD 181, the I stands for independent. So let's be independent. These policies have created more cracks for students to fall through, not less. Neither emotional, political pleas nor the crocodile tears of the current superintendent or any other person in this room will change these facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next up, we have Dan Hegstead, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Dan Hegstead, please. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We live in northeast Brainerd for many years. Three of our four kids went through Brainerd schools and they're all doing really well. And that's, that's really nice. It's, it makes it for a very pleasant retirement. The reason they did well was because we had great schools. And the reason we had great schools is because for decades and decades and decades, people voted for strong schools. That's why people move to a community, why they stay in a community. And now we're in one of those positions where we need to make some decisions. I would remind you that this is the district that recently voted to spend $205 million on new schools and updated facilities. We voted for that. We voted on the referendum to raise $145 million. Key words, "we voted." We invested in our schools because our children are worth it, our community is worth it. And as many people have said, if somebody's going to move to a town, that's the first thing they're going to look at. I would remind you that years ago, the, our legislators were not listening to us saying, "We want our taxes raised to do some good stuff." So we had to get an amendment to the state constitution for the land and legacy amendment. Do you know how hard, how hard it is to get an amendment just considered? And then it passed by 60%. But that's what we had to do, was, was go over their heads. And that's not the way you should run a government. The legislators should have been listening. Now, on a state and national level, we are representative democracy. We have representatives who are supposed to listen and, and do the best they can. But as a school district, we have the opportunity to have a referendum. We don't generally, we don't do that on a state level. So let's have a referendum. Why not? You recently voted to not let us taxpayers vote. Why? The only reason I can think is because you're afraid that we're going to vote in favor of it. What's wrong with that? Why, why would that be a problem? Allowing us to vote is not the same as advocating for the referendum. Make the case in favor, make the case opposed. We'll listen and then we'll let you know what we decide. Let us vote.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Scott Bender, please.
Good evening. My name's Scott Bender. I'm a dad of two warriors, fourth and sixth grade. My wife has taught primary, elementary in this district for 20 years. And I'm also a warrior, born and raised in the Brainerd Lakes area. I'm a local businessman in the community as well. I don't think you're wrong in saying that our district needs some restructuring, something that... that should have been started a while ago, in my opinion. However, I don't feel like it's fair to point fingers and blame our current situation on one or two things at this point. I've watched my wife pour money into getting two college degrees and additional credits on top of that so that she can get the most out of her career financially. I've also seen how the mental, emotional, and physical stress that being a teacher to a classroom of 28 or 29 kids, juggling an abundance of needs with little to no support each year, has on her. Not to mention the hundreds of hours she works throughout the year that are not part of her contract, but what she feels she has to do in order to keep up and be the best for her students. Her and her colleagues are some of the hardest-working people I know. I know that's because I make a point to spend time in her classroom as well as my children's classrooms. Aside from that, when my own children have additional needs that they need help with, they continue to miss out on support while crammed into a classroom of 29 kids. No one is thriving in a setting like that, not the students or the teachers. What I would love to see is this board working with teachers and other staff to problem-solve and come up with a plan. I would love to see some marketing with positive solutions that will retain our warrior families and our warrior staff. Our students and our staff deserve better than what is happening currently in IST 181. Although a restructure has to happen, there's also a need to funding that is inadequate to get back some of the support systems and the resources that we used to have and need now more than ever. Those things are truly what made IST 181 amazing, which is why my wife came to teach in this district to begin with and why I moved back here to raise a family. Over 70% of districts operate with a levy, including neighboring districts. I feel our community has a right to vote on an operating levy. You can get levy funding and do some positive restructuring and marketing all at once. Please give us the opportunity to vote. Thanks for being open-minded and for the hard work that you do in getting our school district to be a better place in this amazing community.
Thank you, Scott. Next up, we have Nikki Hardy, please.
Hello. My name is Dr. Nikki Hardy, and once upon a time, I was an academic scientist. Now, my husband and I live in Pequot Lakes, so I am out of district. But I am here to remind you that the decisions that you make ripple throughout our entire region. So this isn't a matter of whether or not this levy will pass. It's about the people of Brainerd having, being trusted to make a decision. And so in Pequot Lakes, we just recently had a levying referendum. The first time, didn't pass, right? But people were listened to. It was redone, and then it passed. So it wasn't just a financial win for our district. It was the community being respected. The community was listened to. And that's democracy working. And now we also have a semblance of stability through a really challenging time. And it's a place that I'm excited to raise our children. We chose the Brainerd Lakes area because it is exceptional. Brainerd is exceptional. Pequot Lakes is exceptional. This is an exceptional region. But cuts will take away that exceptional, the whole, just that whole idea of being exceptional. So why am I here today in Brainerd? I'm here to remind you that you guys are the cornerstone for our region. These communities, Brainerd and Baxter, are essential to the prosperity of our entire region. So what you do here has a ripple effect through all of our communities. And the things that help a region thrive: good jobs, affordable housing, decent healthcare, and good schools. You have a choice here, and it could impact the ladder of all of those. You could risk the exceptional school district that you guys have running here. So in tuning into the school board meetings, because I have been over the last couple of months, I've taken an interest in what's going on in Brainerd, I've heard concerns about declining enrollment. But why? Declining enrollment is a signal of something significant happening. People are pulling their children out of public education, and why? I have some guesses, and much of it centers on public trust in education that is under siege from misinformation, deliberate division, and outright lies. And let me tell you, families don't stay in communities that underfund their schools. Businesses will go elsewhere. Families will go elsewhere. It will be a difficult time to recruit great people into the region. So every student that leaves will take dollars with them. So this deficit that's projected at $5 million in two years, it could be much worse. A solution: go through. Ask the public. Let them have a voice. Tend to the problem. Balance that budget, knowing that you have stability, that you have stability in the future. So yes, spending should be scrutinized. Communication gap between MDE and rural districts is real. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. All right. Last but not least, we have Lane Larson, please.
Thank you, Chair Spear, School Board. It's nice to see you again tonight. I was here last month as well. As you know, I was the retired superintendent who served from 2016 to 2022. And I spent the majority of my time a month ago talking about statistics regarding the state and operating levy referendums. And I also gave just under 12 examples of how Brainerd Public Schools has reduced and restructured over the course of the last 18 years since the failed operating levy referendum in 2007. As we talked about at that time, and all of you, most of you anyway, have been on the board for quite a while, you understand that this is a really intense and a large undertaking every single year. You spend months and months and months analyzing the budget to balance it. And yet, for 18 years, we have been cutting, which has affected the classroom. It has affected many areas, all of the early interventions that we've been looking for, class size, and et cetera. I'm here tonight to encourage you to all work together to support additional educational solutions and opportunities for our future, for our kids. I agree with the last lady who said, "This is an exceptional area. People want to be here. They want to bring their kids here." This is a phenomenal school district, one that I have been very proud that I was able to serve. But we need to continue to support our school. And that can start with having a united front, working together to find the solutions, continuing to look at our budget, but also to provide that stability that we need. We also need to listen to the public and accurately answer their questions. We must give them the facts that they deserve and let them decide and provide some guidance as to where the future reductions may need to come. Also, I've heard over and over many times, develop an extensive plan, clearly identifying what will be maintained, reinstated, and increased in the future if this operating levy would pass. And if it doesn't, what are the things that you see that are part of the plan that will have to be reduced? But let the people know. Also, demand yearly updates of how this additional revenue has helped move forward the academic excellence of Brainerd Public Schools. And again, every December, you have the Truth in Taxation hearing. You, as a board, can decide if you're going to levy the whole amount, or you can decrease it year by year. I'm asking you to please, please let the constituents provide guidance this November by putting our students first and pursuing educational excellence for all. Thank you for the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This concludes public comment for tonight. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting on June 9. We have a motion by Director Donnerlinger, a second by Director Heidman. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to school board minutes from June 27th from the special board meeting.
So move for approval.
I'll second. We've got a motion from Director Ward and a second from Director Brecken. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
I make a motion. We approve the consent calendar.
And I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Director Brecken and a second by Director Ederman. Any discussion?
A question, Chair. We have a new milk, we're having a new milk provider out. Save some money.
Lost Ben.
Good. Good. And the sale of the Buffalo Hills property, we got that taken care of as far as everything.
Supposed to close by the end of the month.
Yeah. That's good.
All right. Any additional discussion?
And what was the sale again, just for the public?
Oh, yeah.
The people that are here.
$245,000.
$245,000 we're going to get for some property in South Brainerd, so that's a good deal.
We've got a motion by Director Brecken and a second by Director Ederman. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. We'll move on to new business for action tonight. We have a presentation on the Financial and General Fund and some comparative data by Director Mercy Lord, and then up for discussion and approval to move forward with a referendum in the fall of 2025. Welcome, Mercy.
Good evening. So we changed the format a little bit. Normally, you get the financial report at the end, and we're, I'm moving ahead. So the first part of your agenda, I'm going to pull it up, is the financial report, as you guys have seen it in the past. And the only thing really I'm going to note on there is, if you look at the Community Service Fund, or excuse me, the Food Service Fund, we are down about 10%. And that was because we were tracking higher in food expenses in '23, '24. '24, '25, we adjusted the budget, and so we're right around that 80%. So if you look at the bottom of the report, overall, we're at about 80%, which is right in line with last year. And then there'll be no June financial report in August. That won't be presented until the audit's complete. Any questions on that part? Okay. And then this, from our work session, we shared that we had this new analytics program, which is really, really cool. This is going to be something that I'm going to try to do every month, is just, you know, focus on one area. So the focus this, with the topic that we have in hand, is General Fund, All Revenue Sources. So the blue across the top, I'm mainly going to focus just on that top graph. That's all districts, all public school districts, their general fund. All revenue sources, you can see Brainerd's kind of right in the middle. The average is about $17,000, and we're at about $16,500 for revenue sources. This next slide breaks that out then by category. So the General Fund, what are our local sources, i.e. taxes, fees, those kind of things? You can see that we are towards the bottom of that graph. So the average is about $3,400 in the state, and we are at $2,300. So we are under on the local sources. And this is all new. We'll get to the comparative data that we went through at the work session coming up. But this next one is all state sources. So again, just one piece of that pie. The average is $12,600, or about 13, and then we're at about 13. So we're getting around the average for state revenue. And you can see that that line that has, that's Brainerd Public Schools. And there's on this, there's 325 school districts, just so you have that reference point as well. And then on this last slide, all federal sources. So our average is about $1,100, and Brainerd Public Schools is about $1,000. So we're a little under on the federal revenue side. And again, that's taking in all districts across the state of Minnesota, public schools. Any questions on that? Otherwise, I will go to the next presentation. So we did go through this at the board work session, but I'm going to go through it again and just kind of hit some of the highlights. When we talk about comparable districts on this presentation, there's demographic or peer districts, meaning ones that are like us in student population or size, or I should say, area. And then the comparable enrollment districts are just taking what our current enrollment is and going nine above and nine below. So they may not have the same demographics as us, but they are comparable in enrollment. One thing I was going to note on that was Brainerd is at 6,134, and the high on that is Shakopee, which is 7,678. And the low on that is St. Louis Park, which is 4,347, just so you kind of know what the range of enrollment is on those groups. So this first graph goes through the per-student spending comparison. So this is in the General Fund. The orange, or blue, is Brainerd. The orange is the peer group, which is the demographic group. And then the green is the state average. So you can see that per student, we are below the state average and our peer group on spending per pupil. And this is for the last five years.
Why are we below on our spending?
So we're spending less than other districts.
Okay.
Did you ever figure out why we're so, like, we were kind of all the same? We were a little bit low, but we were kind of keeping up in 2020, and now we're dipping down by like 400 or 500 a person? Did you figure out why?
So we've been, as has been presented, we've been making cuts throughout. I mean, our expenses, we continually...
This is our spending.
Right. Right.
But it's comparative to other schools? So if their spending goes up?
Doesn't make it, I don't understand how it wouldn't kind of go together, you know?
So then this next one is expenses of comparable districts and demographics again. And this is by program. So when we talk about the account code structure with school districts, program tells you what areas you're spending. And I know it's very small. I'll see if I can zoom in a little bit. But the areas I want to point out is, the blue dot is Brainerd Public Schools. So you can see that in elementary and secondary instruction, just regular, we are under. And then that line is the median. And then if you go to special ed, we are way over. And we do have a higher student population of special ed, and it's not something that we can just not do. We are mandated with special ed. All the other programs we're kind of in line with, we're a little bit under on the student support services as well, and that would be your social workers, health services. So those are...
So on that special ed, how much are we getting back from the government? And how much are we actually spending that we're losing money?
So that is a really good roll-in to this next slide. So we net, we are actually losing in special ed $4,000, almost $4,700 per kid.
How many, we have 25%. Most districts have 14%.
I don't know. I think the state average is like 17, I want to say.
18.
Yeah.
It's up that high? It was 14 when we got elected, Michelle.
Yeah, I just saw something recently.
I ran on it.
It was like 17,500.
14 and a half. We were at 24 then. Now we're at 25.
But what this means...
It keeps going up.
Is that the $4,000 that we're short, we have to cross-subsidize for. So it comes out of our general fund.
Correct.
To make sure that we are abiding by the federal and state statutes for special ed kids.
Correct.
And part of the problem is the federal government, in 1972, promised 40% reimbursement to school districts for their special ed services. They've never been even close to that. Let's just say around 15%. So the feds have never lived up to the promise, so it throws it back on the state and on the local districts to have to find the resources for our kids, and that's significant.
Correct. And it keeps growing. You can see this is the last five years, and it just keeps going.
So in essence, Mercy, is that $4,000 per student? That's every student, not just the special ed?
Correct.
So of the $15,000 that we get per student from the state, $4,000 from every student is going to pay towards special ed.
Correct.
And why does that keep going up every year?
So...
Why are special ed going up every year in a district?
So if a student moves, I'm just giving examples. If a student moves in and they require a one-on-one, we have to add that para position. If we need to add an interpreter because a student... If we need to add an interpreter because a student moves in, that's another expense that could be added. Just naturally, salary and benefit increases also account for that. But the main thing is, is when we have those students move in that require some of those one-on-one. Or adding programs. If we add a program, for example, at LAC, that's all sped.
And the special ed population is rising nationwide, but also statewide and local wide. Point in hand, fourteen percent when you, when you guys ran for office.
About a half year.
About eighteen percent now. Well, that four percent is huge dollars in increase for the, for the finances.
But why does that keep increasing, John? Why, 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 why is this happening in, in our country and in our school district?
I've got my specific reasons why, but I think a lot of it is societal, period.
Do you think cell phones have anything to do with it? Social media?
That would be included under societal.
This next slide is a similar comparison to that previous one on expenses, but it's revenues. And so you can see Brainerd Public Schools is the green dot, and then the median is the line. So in local taxes, we're on the low end to our peer group. And then for state sources, we're kinda right in the middle. And then the other ones, we are right in line with the median, and a little bit below.
What's the line? The line's the average?
The median, yep.
So we're above average.
Above and above.
So median doesn't mean average. Median means right in the middle.
Medium.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Just checking.
Yep.
We should also say that, or I should also say that in nineteen seventy-two, special ed kids were recognized as any other normal, whatever normal is, student. And thank God that we have provided them since nineteen seventy-two with a fair and adequate education, appropriate education that they deserved. So I'm, none of us are saying special ed is, or I'm not saying that anyhow. Special ed is not the.
It's not that it's not important.
Not, not the cause of a lot of problems, financial problems. Because those kids deserve, deserve it too.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And this next slide is the comparable districts in enrollment. They're referendum authorities. So the only districts that are showing up are those with referendums. So there's eighteen districts in that group, and this is the number of districts that have them. And the highest is about twenty-eight hundred, and then the lowest is about a hundred and eighty, which is Bemidji. So if we took that, even the lowest, a hundred and eighty times our six thousand kids, that'd be about a million dollars additional revenue for us. If we had a refer, and then you can see.
That's on the low end, you said, Mercy?
Yep.
As far as a refer, okay.
Yep. And then you can see the average is about eleven hundred. And again, this is just our enrollment, like, there's data out there for the districts across the state. Like, there, if there's more information needed, we can pull that.
So what's eleven hundred times six thousand?
Six point six million.
I should've just asked you.
Six point six.
Okay. Yeah, I get it.
And then we had talked about the net open enrollment. So again, this is comparable districts of our demographics. So yes, we do lose, in twenty twenty-four, we netted a negative five hundred and eighty-four. But if you look at some of the other districts that we compare to, St. Cloud nets about four thousand, that they're negative, with the lowest being Alexandria netting three hundred out. And then Fergus and Sauk Rapids are a positive two twenty-four and two sixty-eight. And I know during that work session, it was, well, what are they doing? Sauk Rapids is close to St. Cloud, so part of St. Cloud's losses, I'm assuming, part of Sauk Rapids. And then Fergus, I'm not sure what their demographics are. And then also, just next month, I will have the historical, which is typically presented in August on this stuff, for just us specifically, not all the comparable districts. And then this is where I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Grant.
So I went out and I, I was puzzled about it. Why are we in financial trouble? And I, I kinda knew the answer, but I wanted to go to MDE and find out, was I right, was I wrong, was I even close? So what I'm doing here is I'm comparing Brainerd to the state averages. So for this example, this first one in twenty twenty-one, you can see that the state property tax average is twenty-eight thirteen. Our local was twenty-one eighty. General ed, eighty-five hundred. General ed here was eighty-three hundred. State special education was seventeen hundred forty-six per student. Brainerd, twenty-five ninety-four. So right there, we're losing eight hundred dollars per kid, twenty twenty-one, coming out of our general fund. And then the total fund O-one, which is the general fund, the state average is fourteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars per student. Brainerd is fourteen thousand two eighty-nine. And I want you to look at these numbers and see how they change between now and when we get to twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-two, the spread for state property goes a little bit more. The gen ed aid, not quite so much, it kinda holds steady. State special education goes further. And then these totals, fund one, were about five hundred dollars difference. This is where things start to change quickly. In twenty twenty-three.
What is the five hundred dollars, Peter? What are you talking about?
So.
I mean, I saw it up there. Go, go back one.
So we're getting less, we're getting five hundred dollars less per student than the average.
School of the state.
According to the state, to the state.
That's what I thought it was.
Yep. So in twenty twenty-three, you can start to see that the state property tax now is a thousand dollars difference. Gen ed aid staying around that two hundred, two fifty. Look what happens at state average in special education. Now we're up eight hundred plus. And then when we get to the O-one fund, it's spreading further. So what usually happens means is that the average aid throughout the state of Minnesota is growing faster than we are. And to some degree, we're falling further and further behind. And then in twenty twenty-four, state property taxes are thirty-six versus twenty-two, and we're fourteen hundred dollars short. Gen aid, we're still around about three hundred, two fifty. But spec ed now is eleven hundred dollars almost, nine hundred plus. And the fund, O-one fund, now we're a thousand dollars behind. And what you have to understand, and this is why you're all here, seventy-six percent of the schools in Minnesota have a levy operating levy that gives them extra funds to use at their discretion. We don't have that. So we start to fall further and further behind because those that are, that have the levy have operating dollars to use that we don't have. And what I wanna be careful about, I'm not pitting us against the rest of the state. I don't wanna pit general ed against spec, special education. But this is what's happening throughout Minnesota specifically. When seventy-six percent of the community school districts vote yes, they're gonna have more money than we will. Seventy-six school districts, or seventy-three, whatever it is in Minnesota, they do not have an operating levy. That's a choice. A lot of them got defeated many, many times, and the districts made choices of what they were gonna do and so forth. A lot of them kept coming back, coming back. If you noticed, was it Bemidji that was two hundred and eight dollars?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty. They probably fought really hard just to get a hundred and eighty. And it's a difficult plan to get into. It's a difficult situation. My point is that the state of Minnesota is not a sustainable funding mechanism for public education. It's impossible to have it stay sustainable, especially when we're spreading the dollars further and further away from what we call our most critical asset, students, our children. It's just the game we're in. And I'm sure other states are very similar, but I don't care about them. I only care about what's happening in Minnesota. And they've made some decisions two years ago, you know, when we had the eighteen billion. Well, a lot of that money was supposedly one-time costs. They said they gave a lot of money to public schools, which they did, but we're spending four hundred thousand dollars a year on unemployment insurance out of that money they gave us. That's not a one-time money. So our problem is, yes, we have cut, I don't know what we cut this year, two point six or whatever, and we're still three-two, three-two in the hall. We cannot keep up with the deficit coming out of our general fund for special education. In four years, we have spent six million dollars out of the general education fund to cover the gap between federal and state and what we're spending. And we have to do this because it's called maintenance of effort. We can't cut back in special education services willy-nilly. There has to be an actual audit to, to prove our reduction is appropriate. And as Mercy alluded to, as kids come in and they need special education services, and I don't know the answer to this one, Randy, but a lot of the needs are getting very, very complicated. And we have to pick those, we have to pick them up. We have really severely handicapped children at the LAC. We have handicapped children in our regular ed school. And they all take a lot of time and effort and supervision for learning. That's the game we have. That's the cards we have. We cannot turn them away. So we figure out a way to how to make this work, and we've been taking money out of the general ed aid to balance the cost. You cannot do one point five million every single year and stay ahead of the ballgame. We're down six million in four years. That's why we're deficit spending. Are there other causes? Sure. Inflation and so forth. There's been talk about, are we paying teachers too much? Everybody deserves a good wage and good benefits. Could we do things differently? Probably, but that's negotiated, and that's how that game works. We don't get to negotiate this. We don't get to negotiate with St. Paul. We don't get to negotiate with what the legislators decide to do. And so what I have to tell you is that we have to negotiate now locally. And with all due respect, all six of you board members, you got to go through an election process. You paid your two-dollar fee, you filled out the application card, you qualified as a candidate to be an elected board member of one eighty-one. You went out and you asked for people to support you, either financially, volunteer. You put signs up, you had articles in the paper, you might have done radio, I don't know, stickers on your car, whatever. But your goal was to get enough people to vote for you so you could get elected to the board. And what your aspirations were at the time, I don't know. But right now, what we're stuck with is that the very tool you used to get elected, you don't wanna use again for the public. And I find that quite ironic. The vote is the most powerful thing our country has compared to the rest of the world. It can be yes, it can be no. I'd like to thank everybody who spoke here today, whether you were for or against the levy vote. At least you said maybe we should have a vote. And I, I, I have to tell you this. The reason I wanna vote in November of twenty-five is, yes, it'd be the only ballot question for the community to face. In twenty twenty-six and in twenty twenty-eight, there's gonna be lots of names on the ballot. And usually at that time, public education is at the very end of the ballot, and hardly anybody votes for it. Because by the time you get through all the other names, the judges and representatives and whoever, the mayors and the city councils and so forth, you get to the end, and usually you forget to vote for the school district. That's not bad, that's not good, it's just a fact of life. Why would we vote at a time when the competition is way above us? That's my only point. It's competitive enough in twenty-six with midterms. Twenty twenty-eight, we start all over again with the big vote. And people get saturated with a lot of political stuff, and all of a sudden, they don't wanna vote after they get through the presidential or the senate or the house and local, and that's it. So we're faced with a strong dilemma, a very strong dilemma. Those numbers don't lie, and they're gonna continue to get worse. We can cut, yes. How far do you want us to cut? Even if we get a levy vote, yes, we're still gonna have to cut, because we can't make up three million in one year. And that number's gonna continue to kinda grow a little bit, because we're losing students. And it's not so much because people are leaving us, we're going from two point two five kids per household to one point eight five. That's heavy across the state of Minnesota. So the dilemma is, are we gonna use a voting tool or not? And all I ask of the board is, you use it to get here. It shouldn't be used because you don't want to or because you want to. It's a right, an opportunity to listen, make a choice. If we don't vote, I can guarantee you that three million is gonna be five million that we have to figure out going into next year. Because we can't keep up, plain and simple. And some people ask, well, can you tell us what we're gonna cut? We don't know yet. We're just getting through, finding out what the state gave us in June. But I can guarantee you this, you're gonna know, because there's no way would I allow you to vote not knowing what you're voting for. Because if I did that, you should fire me before the action starts. You will know what's on the line, what's being trimmed, and it's not gonna be a one-year trim. It's gonna continue until we calm down on the budget side, or we stabilize in the enrollment side. Otherwise, it's gonna be a little bit like desforestation of a forest. There'll be a lot of trees getting cut. I can't tell you what and why and how and what. It's gonna happen one way or the other, whether yes, it'll be trimmed. Without any voting at all, until maybe twenty-six, twenty-eight, we're gonna cut our way to get there. And that's not healthy for anybody, I don't think. So you wanted data, you got it.
That property tax stuff, Peter, because of such a difference we have, is that because of the seasonal properties?
Well, it's really based on, certain communities have a much higher tax base than others. So if you go into Rochester, Minnesota, they wanna raise ten million dollars, it might cost you fifteen bucks. You go to Holly, it might cost them a hundred and fifty bucks for the same amount of money, because they're tax-rich properties. Minneapolis, St. Paul, same thing. So for here.
So that doesn't have anything to do with seasonal?
No.
And the money we get back from the state?
Nope. This is everything balanced equal.
Maybe we should, every few years, maybe we should start voting for people down in St. Paul that give a shit about education.
No.
Set a block, you're saying morons.
Let's see what you can do around here. So Peter, basically what you're saying is,
Okay.
is that if we do a levy, that there's not gonna be any improvements? Because a lot of people have been on me that, oh, we're gonna fix this, we're gonna fix that, and we're gonna get the EAs back. And you're admitting that we're gonna be five million in the ditch. So the five mil is the five mil, so it's a wash. So we're just basically buying ourselves a couple of years?
No, DJ. First of all, it depends on what the amount is we would ask for. I think we're asking for three point two as kind of the median.
I thought it was five point five. I thought we talked about five point five, that's what Leatherman said.
Depends if we go to eighteen.
So the survey had a range, five point five to one point something, and the median of that is about three point two.
So DJ, if we gotta vote yes, first of all, we don't get the money for a year later, but we're still gonna be trimming. It's just, we won't have to trim as much, because we're gonna try and see if we can come to a balanced budget, which I think is critical. That's our responsibility. But can we do it without damaging some of the things we think are really critical to offer? And still, what this lady who left here from Pequod, we are the cornerstone of this area. We wanna stay that way. It's gonna be expensive, so to speak, but that's the game we're in right now. That's just the way it is.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the operating levy in November of twenty twenty-five. Well, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the operating levy in November of twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Director Brecken and a second by Director Ward. Further discussion?
Absolutely. You've kind of opened up the discussion part of it. I'm going to be real honest with everybody here. There's some business owners that were here tonight. If they go to the bank and they want to borrow money, they got a big plan that they want to do. They want to open, they want to change their business and they want to do something. They got to have a plan first. A banker is not going to borrow money to a business owner that doesn't have a plan. And, uh, Lane, I agree with you. We need a plan. We don't have a plan. Everybody says we have a plan. Give me the plan. If, you know what, if I would have been someone that was in favor of this levy in June of twenty twenty-four, Peter, I would have been in your office pounding on the table. Let's get a plan. I don't know what I'm voting on, people. I don't know what I'm voting on. The money has to come for the the, not the money, but we've got to figure out our spending stuff first. Okay, let's have that discussion. We're already in, not into, but we're close to a new school year. So all the cuts have been made, correct?
For the most part, yeah.
Yeah, for the most part. Okay. So we got a year. We got a year where we can engage the community. Blueprint one eighty-one, you love the charge. Did you ask for the money first or did you have a plan first? The plan is first and the community was involved. We have not involved the community at all here except to say we're going to have cuts, we're going to have cuts, we're going to have cuts. I got an email today towards the end of the day. And it was the best email I've gotten from, from everybody. Now, thank you for sending emails. I appreciate it. The person has solutions to the problems. They weren't just talking about cuts and teachers getting, you know, losing their job and programs being cut. I mean, I've been in the schools. I've been standing around for the last two and a half years, you know, I've been in the schools. We got to have a plan. And that's what I want us to, I want this board to come together as a board. As Lane suggested, we're a team, okay? We are divided right now. We are so divided, it's unbelievable. And the community is going to suffer. So we need to roll up our sleeves. And I want this man right here to walk out after his next year, holding his head high, et cetera. We've got to come together. We got to have a plan. I would like to go into every elementary school and sit down and talk to the principals. That everyone's got a leadership committee. I want to start going to those meetings. I want to find out what is going on? What is going on? We, we come to a meeting like this. And we voice our opinions, but sometimes, I truly believe this. Sometimes when teachers give their opinion, if it isn't what someone else likes, retribution sets in. I really believe that. And we got to cut that out. Teachers are, you are, you are rock stars. I've seen you operate. But how can I? How can I as an individual vote for a levy when I don't even know what the hell the plan is? Oh, we'll come up with the plan afterwards. Oh, really? Really? How does that Scott work in the banking business? I'm going to come in with a plan, but I, and I need ten million dollars. Now, trust me. Let's say it's three million over ten years, that's thirty million, right? Trust me, it's sixty million. Because that levy is going to get, it'll get re-upped for another, that's a lot of money. We need to talk about it. Get involved. I'm sure you will, Lane. Let's talk about this as a community. Let's figure it out. No, we're not. I haven't heard a plan yet. I have not heard a plan. All, all I've heard is teachers getting cut, this being cut, this being cut. Let's figure it out what we need to do.
Director Heyman.
So I'm, I'm, I've said my piece.
Thanks, everyone. Director Heyman, as far as the plan goes, I absolutely agree that there needs to be a plan in place. And I think this is the first step to getting us there. On what kind of plan are we creating? Are we creating a plan that's centered around putting out a levy vote or are we creating a plan around just straight cuts? And so I think we do need to create a plan and that is, that is definitely on us. And this is the first step in getting to that plan.
Now, the first step is a plan. The, the next process is the board sitting back saying, okay, we're going to have a levy. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what the plan is.
So some of you have been at this table, or at this table have been on the finance committee for two and a half years and you've sat with the budget. Knowing we would experience significant budget cuts in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. I have yet to see a plan or recommendation of how we can right-size the budget. While keeping with our great tradition of offering robust, valuable educational arts and athletic opportunities. And maintaining appropriate class sizes. My assumption is that there are limited cuts that can be made without compromising student achievement, student and staff well-being, and student and staff safety, safety. So not allowing the community to weigh in on whether or not they would support the future health of our schools and denying community voice is holding this district hostage. We are not going to ask for a levy without proposing what kinds of thing, what we would do with the money that we're asking for. We're not just going to say, yep, we're going to vote, we're going to tonight approve to go for a levy and then we're going to put it on the ballot in November with no transparency. We also, in that process, will let the community know what significant cuts we'll need to make if the levy doesn't pass. That we're not at the, we, I mean, it probably in retrospect would have been nice in this discussion if we would have had a plan. I can't even believe, I mean, I assumed we would go to the board meeting and we would approve a levy. And then we would talk really seriously about what that looks like. I am dumbfounded that we're sitting in this space and we're fighting about, or we're disagreeing on whether or not we should even go to the community our voice and ask for a levy. It makes no sense to me. I don't know if it's because some people on this, at this table are business owners and they don't want to see their taxes go up. It just, it makes no sense. What are we afraid of if the levy passes? I know what we're afraid of if the levy doesn't pass, but what are we afraid of if the levy passes? Why?
I can tell you what I'm afraid of, if you, if you care.
I do.
Is that I've been talking about this for the whole two and a half years I've been on the board. I'm sick and tired of us chasing kids down the street. Well, one of the neighboring schools, I will leave them unnamed, their reading scores are at like thirty-five percent. So we're dusting them. Like, we're doing way better, but they've got three hundred of our kids.
But you can see that our district spends less on our students than the, in our, um, in our our what? Demographic than other schools. That's, maybe that has something to do with why the test scores are lower or not where we want them to be.
We offer a lot of nice things. I just think that, you know, I've been begging for a couple of years to try to get some changes made in the administration. Or this board, for that matter. No one's wanted to work on any of this stuff. And now all of a sudden, we're out of panic and we're out of money. We knew this was coming. Marcy, you and I knew, right? We've talked about it for how many years? This isn't a surprise. None of this snuck up on us. We've continually spent money that we didn't have. We give raises that we can't afford. We do all these things and now it's the taxpayers' fault. So our mistakes, and I'll take credit, I voted for these budgets. I voted for the budget this year, three million dollars in the hole. Right? So I mean, I, I deserve some of it, right? When are we, when are we going to face the music? Like, that's my deal. It's like, you know, it's like, oh, Lord. Like, we've been talking about this for how long? If we could just get a hundred kids back. Is that what they're worth? Sixteen thousand apiece? That's a million six. I don't see them coming back. Maybe, but I, I, I'm more worried about us losing more of them. You know, they, the, the, the kindergarten to second grade needs help. We've got to get these kids to a third grade level. John, you and I have talked about it for a couple of years. What have we changed? You know, it's not like, oh, if we had a referendum, we could get back the EAs. No, we already know we can't. So it's like, what are we gaining?
Why couldn't we?
Well, we just talked about it. Peter just said we'll be five million on the whole next year, so we're just going to keep cutting. We can't add them back in. We have to make some tough choices. Something has to go. I don't know what it is. I've made plenty of suggestions. People think I'm crazy. I've never said you were going to do any of them. I'm not like coming in there kicking your door in, saying this is what you're going to do. I'm just saying, what about this? What about this? What about this? I haven't seen anything from the district in the years I've been doing this that came and said, what do you think about this? What do we got, what would you guys think at one of our work sessions or anything? Bought if we trimmed this, trimmed that, trimmed this, trimmed that. It's not, it's just not the way it works. We, we did make actual cuts this year. But there's never been any like brainstorming, like what could we possibly do, right? And it just doesn't seem to me like it's a high priority for the district, so I have a tough time.
But you've sat on the finance committee for the last two and a half years.
That's why I said this isn't surprising to me.
And Director Donnelly, I have heard you say, there's, you've looked high and low. There's nothing there. I know we are bare bones. And if I were to liken it to my own household budget, I would say, yeah, we're not cutting vacations anymore. We're cutting meals next week. That's where we're at. And you're creating this false dichotomy like there's only two options. We have to get more students or we have to cut. And that is not true. We have other options. Although we are a service, we're not a business. We don't have a lot of levers we can pull, you know, for new innovations and, and new products to sell. We can ask the voters and they want to be asked. They want to be part of this decision.
Well, some of them do.
This district. If they don't want, if
Madam Chair.
If they don't want to be a part of, they don't want us to approve, they can vote no. So let's just let them decide. And if, if our community votes no, the majority vote no, then we know where we stand. Then we know. But again, it's not an either or. We can still continue to work on right-sizing the budget. And we can go to the community to see, are you willing to support the future health of our district?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Ward.
So, um, first of all, thank you all for your discussion and being here and showing, no matter what side of the aisle you're on, uh, or what you believe in. Yes, no, whatever. I, I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that you're here. And, um, no matter what you feel either way about an operating levy or not. I did a lot of research this week. And, you know, I, I lost a really good friend recently as she was shot at her doorstep because she took a vote that took courage. It took courage for her to vote the way she did, but she voted for that for the better good of everyone. For the better good of every citizen in the state of Minnesota. And that's what we need to look, I, I came together, I heard people say, well, you put money on it and it doesn't make a difference. Yes, it does. Research shows that. When you put money towards and invest in education, it pays dividends. It pays dividends. And you can shake your head or you can do all you want, but that's a fact, Mark. That's a fact. That's a fact. Now, I'm Madam Chair, I'm not done.
Yes, I'll let you continue. Excuse me. Nothing from the audience and we'll have to escort you out. Thank you.
So the plan, Madam Chair, I went and looked at the oath that we all took. And in this oath that we all took, it talks about that we're going to do the betterment for the good of all. We're going to do the best job that we can to secure a sound system for our kids. And it is about children, by the way. And that's part of the oath that we took. And as I'm doing all my research, I'm thinking, you know, this isn't really about, and we didn't even, Marcy, you didn't even get a chance to go to the expenditures. If they, if people saw, if people saw, and they, and they should see tonight what the expenditures, how, how we have been spending in this district compared to around the state. Because that's, that is very important and all of us have seen that. And all of us have seen it. And the fact of the matter is, is we are under, I mean, expenditures are way, way low in, in the Brainerd district. But then I realized, you know, this isn't about, um, this isn't about money we spent and this and that and up. This is about, um, allowing people to have a vote and a choice and a right, just like you said, Superintendent Grant. And I came in tonight all prepared with all kinds of research and data to show and to talk about why we need to have an operating levy. And you've seen some of it, but you haven't seen all of it. But the bottom line is, give all of us, give every community member a chance to say yes or no. That's what this is about. That's what it should be about. That's what I heard about tonight. Even the people that are not, you know, that didn't seem to support an operating levy, they said, let us vote on it too. I heard that from those folks as well. So Madam Chair, I, I beg my colleagues to reconsider, to think about this. And, and you know, you, there's ways that you can live to your principles and allow a vote to happen. If, if you, if you abstain from a vote, that, that in itself, Madam Chair, that in itself, um, would allow maybe a majority of the vote. When, when, when somebody abstains, that doesn't count toward the vote total, correct, Madam Chair?
It counts as a yes vote.
Okay.
It counts as an obsession. Yeah.
Okay, but basically it doesn't count.
Yeah.
So there, there's, there's a way to live to your principles and allow, allow all folks, all folks to vote, yes or no.
I, I, I too did some research on a variety of issues, um, these last, this last week. And I was really kind of looking, doing a little deeper dive in teacher salaries because that seems to come up all the time. We're paying our teachers a lot of money. Well, the average teacher pay has failed to keep up with inflation over the past decade. Teacher salaries have fallen further and further behind those of their college-educated peers. Adjusted for inflation, on average, teachers are making five percent less than they did ten years ago. According to N E A, the National Education Association, and this was in April twenty twenty-four. The Economic Policy Institute says that the minimum living wage is the income needed for a family of one adult and one child to have a modest but adequate standard of living. The minimum living wage in Minnesota, one adult and one child, is sixty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven. It's a hundred and nineteen for a family of four. According to the current teachers master agreement, a Brainerd teacher in lane one would have to work for nineteen years before they would make the living wage today. That's interesting to me. We, we pay our teachers well. They have good benefits package. But it is what, um, we, we pay for what we get.
I think the reason that the teachers come up a lot, Michelle, is not because anybody's after the teachers. It's more that they're the biggest group. So it makes the biggest difference. We have nine bargaining groups. Teachers are half of employees. So their contract is such a bigger deal to the district than anybody else's is because they're such a large group. I don't think it's a personal jab at teachers. But you know, it's the, it's a, for the lack of a better term, it's the low-hanging fruit. It's what everybody sees because that's the big number.
And I guess I'm tired of that narrative.
Well, no, we know the teachers were cut. We know we need to pay them. We're not saying we don't. So, um, I would just like to say, I have read all your emails and thank you for their encouragement. There's some well-intentioned, intended emails and there are some not-so-nice ones. You know who you are. I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor of bigger classrooms or cutting sports or music classes. I went through the failed levy in two thousand and seven. I had three daughters when you cut the sports. Do you know what us parents did? We all got together, we formed Sports Booster, so our kids would have sports. We worked together as a group of parents. So I know what it's like to lose things. I just need to know where the money is being spent. Right now, we have buildings that are not being utilized properly. We have empty classrooms in every single school. I'm going to give you an example. So in Liloa, we can have four hundred and seventy-five seats. We have three hundred and fifty students in that school. In Riverside, we can have six hundred and twenty-five students. We have four hundred and five of them. This is May twenty-five. So what is, what, we have all So what is, what, we have all these empty classrooms. Why don't we do some closing of a school? Move some students, keep the fifth graders. There's a lot of options we have not talked about. We need to talk about this before I feel we ask the taxpayers for more money. Everybody doesn't have that kind of money to keep spending on things until we get through some of this stuff. And I know I've only been on the board five months, but I need to learn, this budget and how we get the money from the federal and the state is a big learning curve. And I have been trying to catch up in everything. So I need, I've been doing a lot of research, but until I can figure out where the money's getting spent, I can't ask, in good conscience, I can't ask people to give us more money right now. I'm not against the levy, but right now I gotta figure where it's getting spent.
But Director Ederman, in all due respect, you can't hold the district hostage because you don't know what you're doing.
No, I'm not holding the district. I am not holding it hostage. I am not holding it hostage. I have run several businesses. If I know we are not making the money, I do cuts. I figure out where that money's going. And I've been trying to do this. And I just found right here with our schools, put a lot of them empty. We don't have enough students and we need to close something. How much should we spend on Harrison just to get it up? And what is, what is Harrison at right now? Two hundred and thirty-two kids. And there's three hundred and seventy-five kids we could have there. What did we spend? Eighteen, was it eighteen million dollars?
I, I don't think you're gonna get any pushback on that. I absolutely agree with you that we need to look at that. And I think it's a both and.
Yeah.
I absolutely agree.
We need to.
I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, we are on the same page.
Marcy, could you, can you tell me how much savings there would be if we were to go, if we were to close a building?
So we looked at BLC and it would be about five hundred thousand, cause we still have to, you know, keep it heated if we were to keep it on as our own. So it'd be about five hundred thousand. And I just wanna go back to a couple of things. And I'm, I'm just trying to get information out there. I'm gonna say that right now. You talked about Blueprint 181. That was a little bit before my time, but I believe that there was.
Mine too, yeah.
But you, you said there, there had to be a plan, right? They did a survey, same thing, looking to see what the, the community would support. They did an assessment. It came in way more than what the two hundred and five million was. But they said, we're gonna support, I believe it was in December, we're gonna support going for a referendum, the school board did. So then when that passed, that's when they tried to formulate that plan. They formulated the plan on how much to spend on each building. They didn't go into details. They didn't say, we're gonna do this, this, and this, but they said, we're gonna spend X amount on elementaries. We're gonna spend X amount on Washington. And then that's what went to the voters. And when that, yep, and then when that got approved, that came after. So that is generalities. It's not specifics. So then they, so then they went to voters, voters supported it. And then that's when we hashed out the real details. So I have not done this before. I'm gonna look at Peter, but I believe that if you guys voted yes on this, then we would come up with a plan on, it, this is the amount. We'd have to discuss the amount, right? And then after that, we would have to discuss, if it doesn't pass, what are the options?
This is government. They do it differently. It's like Obamacare. We pass it, then we figure out what's gonna be in it.
I go back to what, I go back to what Wayne said.
He's unbelievable.
I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen here. When this meeting's over, we are gonna be so divided as a board, it's gonna, it's gonna make your head.
It's gonna be just fine. It'll be just fine.
Well, I think, but, but it's gonna be divided.
Let's start dealing with some stuff that's gonna help the kids and help the teachers not get bit and sore at. Let's start getting some behavioral issues figured out around here. All we talk about is this adult stuff all the time. I'm just tired of it.
So I've heard you wanna cut mental health programs.
Who said that? Who said that?
I, that was, that was, so the other day, cuts family service collaborative workers.
I've been told that I wanna get rid of a hundred and fifty teachers at Forest View. Peter told me there aren't even a hundred and fifty teachers at Forest View. I hear there's gonna be fifty kids in a class. I haven't taught to anybody about this. You guys have been on the radio, doing all kinds of wonderful things.
And the last board meeting, you said we could cut QCOMs or family service collaborative workers. Who are the mental health workers, the only mental health workers in the elementary schools? We already cut a counselor position from, um, the high school and Forest View.
You asked what, what, things that could be done. I gave you things that could be done, doesn't mean you have to do it.
You're worried about behavior in the classroom, but yet it, it doesn't make sense then to cut those kinds of supports.
Well, I've been told by other people that we cannot remove these little kids that get themselves in trouble, and we have to evacuate the classrooms. I got the law sitting on my desk. I might even have it with me. I don't see anywhere it says that. It's our policy. It's not a state policy. It's like, we need to get back and get this under control. Quit losing our kids.
Thank you.
People are scared to go to school.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just some of the reasons though that, that we as a board have talked about, um, and presented to the community, why we, why, uh, why we can't bring up, why we, why you shouldn't vote for an operating levy? Why you shouldn't let them vote? We talked, I heard it tonight again, a liberal agenda, a woke agenda. Is Kerry Ross back there? Kerry, do all of our sta, classes meet state standards? What's that?
Not yet.
Okay, do we have a woke agenda in this district, Kerry? What's that? State standards, state standards, correct? And by the way, as defined in the dictionary, woke means recognizing systematic injustices and prejudices, especially those affecting marginalized communities. It implies not just an awareness, but also a proactive stance, a willingness to engage with and address these issues. That's what woke means. That's what woke means. So call me woke then, okay, that's fine. But to use it not to let people, uh, vote, that's ridiculous, in my opinion. Um, classes that are offered are meeting state standards. Um, we all as a board got a letter stating that there were two medical folks that are so needed in this area, in our region, that we're looking at moving here in areas that we needed their expertise. They weighed in with everything in the community. They took their time to look at things and they, and the, and the biggest decision was, um, how, how the schools are. They decided not to come to our school district at this point.
Was that because of the reading scores?
No, that was because of the issues.
You got the email. I mean, we got the email.
I did. And that's somebody's opinion. So maybe they got to offer more money somewhere else. Have you ever think of that? Ooh.
That's not what was stated, but anyhow.
By the person that doesn't know.
Um, Madam Chair, I have four, right? Thank you. Um, you know, some of you have talked about adding EAs as a, as a thing that you'd like to do. And I've heard that out there. Class sizes in K two that are twenty-eight and twenty-nine are absolutely ridiculous and don't do anything, especially our children any good. We, the only way we can add EAs is by passing an operating levy. Somebody said an operating levy, an operating levy. I think that was you or I think there was somebody. Um, class sizes are another issue. You know, they just came out today with the thirty top high schools in the state of Minnesota. Anybody see that article? Thirty top high schools.
Where was it?
And you know what they all had in common? Class size ratio, ratio, students to teachers is the first thing, one of the things that they had. And then, and then also electives, um, uh, offerings that they have. You know, when we, when we talk about, and you did suggest something about letting a hundred and some teachers go from somewhere at a, at a board meeting. I heard it myself. Um, I, I know that that, that was a, that was a thing.
What board meeting was that, John?
Uh, I'm, I'm just saying that when we cut, when we cut educators, when we cut educators, um, or when we think we need to cut staff, really what we need to look at is full-time equivalencies, FTEs. Full-time equivalencies. Um, if we cut in two thousand and seven, and when the last referendum failed, the, a class that I taught was cut because of budget crisis. Those seventy-five kids that I had, or eighty-five kids or whatever I had, had to go somewhere else unless we cut an FTE. So it, it isn't about cutting teachers. It isn't about having too many teachers or not having enough, uh, uh, kids or whatever. It's about the FTEs that we have. And we've been cutting FTEs and cutting FTEs and cutting FTEs, which has exploded the class sizes. Um, the, the information board members that we've been given recently, this information tonight that the community has now seen is valuable information. Thank you Superintendent Grant, Marcy, and Jason. I don't know where you are, but you were a part of that too. Bringing this information is critical and it only indicates that we should pass an operating levy and give the people an opportunity to pass, to vote for that. So this information is invaluable. Thank you for that. Um, thank you for allowing me to have the floor again. I appreciate it. I'm not sure that I'm done, but we'll keep talking.
I don't wanna put you on the spot. That's fine with me. But it's, it's, it's stuff that you, yeah, it's stuff that you've told us, et cetera. So I just wanna repeat some of it. June four of twenty twenty-four, you remember that day?
At the end of the school year.
Last year.
That was your interview, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, oh, twenty-four.
That's when we interviewed you. Yeah. We were talking about a lot of different things. And you had said, if the community, if the board, I should say, if the board goes for a levy, you'll support it. You will do everything you can to pass it. Okay? Uh, you also said in that same interview that in Owatonna, because things were kinda getting kinda off track, you froze rate wages for one whole year. Nobody got a raise. Nobody got a raise, including yourself. And I commend you for this standpoint. You're not taking a raise now the second year here. And you said the second year of the contract, one percent. How much money would that save us? To get us kinda back on track just a little bit? What, what, I guess what I'm suggesting is this. We need a plan and we don't have it. You, people, people keep saying, we have a plan. We have a plan. We don't have a plan. You know what your plan is? An operating levy. That's what your plan is. That's what, that's what your plan is, is to have an operating levy. But we need to look at our budget. We need to look at how we can do things differently. I had an email today, a great email. Class sizes in one building are so low and then in other buildings, they're so high. I mean, we, we need to talk about these things. And Wayne, I'll, I'll keep coming back to what you said. Uh, we need a plan and we need to get the community involved. Right now, right now.
You, you keep referring to me. Can I, can I answer what he is alluding to to me?
I don't think so. I'm in the bathroom. I'll be back. Well, what do we get turned this into? I thought we didn't do that. Okay, Karen.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess.
Passion wouldn't have been very big.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying there was so many other things going on at the district level with Blueprint 181 that to take on that, then it wouldn't have been possible.
And one of the things that, I don't know if you paid attention to when Marcy does her presentation, especially the end of the year one fiscal year, two years in a row, we had over a million dollars in interest. If we hadn't had that, we'd be in a lot deeper trouble. It was good investments by the company that worked for us, that made really great investments. And of course, some of it had to do with the 200 and some million that was interest off of that, and we didn't spend it all right away. But without really good advisors, financial advisors, we would have never had that. Because I think one year went from 800,000 to over a million five or something. I might have been high in the 800. But we were lucky. I mean, you roll the dice. It's like when you go to Vegas, you roll the dice and hopefully, you know, you don't get snake eyes. Well, our investors did a great job for us for two years. The interest is not there now.
And I truly believe, Board, that in our heart of hearts, we're all here because we believe in these kids and we want to provide an education they can be proud of and that will continue to feed this community and continue to bring people to this community. And the more we cut, the more we cause division within our community over letting them vote or not vote, or
We could have been done with that a month ago.
What they wanted to invest in.
Certainly that song and dance.
We, we need to come together around this. And I know we all
So for $15,600, we have kids that don't know how to do fractions. Don't know how to read cursive writing. Oh, yeah. Why would I bring that up?
How many kids? You keep throwing out these, these statements, but how many kids in our district?
Well, call feelings. Call Norson. Call high tech.
Can't do fractions. I just want some data to say, yeah, I agree with you.
Well, I just hire them, right? I hire them.
I do know unequivocally, you're not going to get more kids that know fractions if we continue to cut. You're going to get less.
Maybe we should just try teaching them again, because Tim Murtha told me we don't even expose them to. But whatever, you know, if you think more money is going to fix it, I just thought for 15-6, we could maybe get that done. That's where my trouble comes in. I've been doing this for two and a half years. We do the same thing every year, expect different results.
You know, and DJ, you pose
Cursive writing.
You pose an argument that is, is really not easy to combat, because you're thinking back to the days when you were in school, and I think back to the days when I was in school. That's a new plan. But I would tell you this, I would rather see the 15-6 get closer to 16-6.
I agree with you.
But that isn't going to happen by magic. Most of that is due because 76% of the districts have extra operating dollars that we don't. So that's never going to get tighter, because we don't have the money coming in. We don't have the revenue, the extra revenue. And I hate to be repetitive, but if we, if we think St. Paul's going to bail us out, I've got sand in Arizona to sell.
Yeah, we know that.
So the only option is if the community is willing to step up and do it or not. I mean, there's no other gimmick. There's no other game. In town, yes, we can write size to the point where we're not offering a whole lot of stuff. But like, you know, when I asked Andrea Russ, after you built onto the new high school, all those job creating courses were because of what was built at the high school.
Yeah.
Well, do we have to say there's got to be 25 kids in those classes in order to offer it? If there's not, the next thing you know, the culinary kitchen. What's the point of it? We don't have enough kids to get in there, because you've got to have 25. You've got to have this number. It's a, we're fighting a battle we can't win alone. That's my point. We just can't win it alone. Unless we have a benevolent benefactor in the community that's going to say, you know what, I'll pick up your debt. And then from that point on, you're on your own. I don't know anybody that can do that. But that's just
And some of the ideas that you've thrown out, I mean, legally, we can't do some of them, right? Like, there are statutes. And if we were to do that, then we open up our liability of, okay, so then a parent could potentially sue the district, because we're going against state statute, right? So I, I, some of the ideas, yes, we want to be open to, but some of them we can't legally do.
I just wanted to know if we could teach the kids to read and write cursive writing. I don't know. It's like, it's an old fashioned thing.
DJ, at this table, our words matter. And when you say things like that, you are insulting every teacher that walks into this building.
Not insulting the teachers. It's not the teacher's fault. They're not picking that out.
You're saying that they can't read and write and do fractions in cursive.
I didn't say they couldn't read and write. Well, they can't read and write in cursive.
We're not teaching it. No, I hear spreading an article about cursive. You know, I just want to say this. Just want to say it. You know what's happening in the different universities right now? The prof, the professors are saying, no more electronic-generated essays, theses, or nothing. You're going to handwrite them out. And the reason for it is because they don't want AI getting involved with, with, with the kid. Write it out. And you're going to understand it a lot better when you write. I'm just saying that.
But is it appropriate for us to weigh in on those kinds of things?
It's just appropriate for me to be able to vote for something that I believe in when I've been asking for this for two and a half years.
They, they do teach cursive in second grade. There's a unit on cursive. It's been around for a long, long time.
Well, there's a lot of kids that are coming out of the school. I never got to see it, I guess.
I mean, I was talking
Call the question.
Yeah, I was talking to some teachers, you know, on my way back to the bathroom and
I'll call the question.
All right.
Call the question.
We've called the question. Remind me, do we vote on this?
Yep, it's got to be a second.
Oh, you got a second.
It's got to be a two-thirds majority vote for it.
Is there a second? Randy, did you want to finish what you were going to say?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
I've said enough.
Okay. Is there a second?
All second.
All right, we've got, so we're going to vote on calling the question. We've got a motion by Director Donderlinger and a second by Director Brecken. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. All right, we will vote on the discussion on the table, the motion on the table to approve, to move forward with a referendum in the fall of 2025. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
DJ Donderlinger.
No.
Stephanie Ederman.
No.
Randy Heidman.
Uh, no.
Sarah Spear.
Yes.
Tom Ward.
Yes.
Shell Breckin.
Yes. Motion fails. All right.
Thanks, Marcy.
Let's move on. Thank you, Marcy. Let's move on to the approval of the administration recommendation.
Motion.
All right, we've got a motion by Director Donderlinger. Is there a second? Yeah. Is there a second?
I made the motion.
Yep.
Stephanie.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second.
Well, the reason we're having this is we missed Jennifer's name in June. So we needed to correct that. We wanted that to be public.
Bees cake.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. All right, we've got the presentation of the annual comprehensive literacy plan by Melissa Cornia, please. Welcome.
I'm Melissa Cornia. I've sat here in front of you this year before. We talked about a novel. We talked about 912 ELA, and we talked about personal finance. So I'm here now to talk to you about our literacy plan and specifically a comprehensive approach to this discussion, because you've seen pieces. And so just wanting to tie it all together to a comprehensive approach. Before I move into that, I'm going to invite us all to think of a favorite book, whether it was a book you've read to someone, a book that was important to you, a book in your journey, a book maybe just this past summer. But I'm going to invite you to think of a, a book that's been an important moment in your life. When I think of that book, one of the books I think of is Matilda. And, and Matilda is part of why I sit in front of you now is because I believe in the power of books. And just recently got to talk to Director Lundgren about even someone in her life who is excited about Matilda and the joy and love of Matilda and, and what books can do. So I'd invite you, as you, as we go through this, of just we, to take a breath and to kind of tap back into what literacy can do, what we want it to do, but also the joy and the identity connected to it. So here is the Minnesota Read Act 2023. The goal of the Minnesota Read Act, the shift that came with it, is every year, every student being proficient. So beginning in kindergarten, and when we say every student, that we are especially making sure that our multilingual learners and our students receiving special education, that we're not leaving them behind. So before, it used to be through grade three, but now specifically with Read Act, every year looking at that reading proficiency. So what that means for us here in Brainerd Public Schools, what we did this past three, or what we did this past year, these three goals, I'll give you the quick overview, and then I'll go into each a little more depth. So the first is in alignment with the Read Act, that Phase One that was part of the Read Act, that we trained our teachers in structured literacy. Our second goal was multi-tiered systems of support, specifically an assessment system, and thinking about those Tier One practices mentioned in Goal One. And then similar to the Read Act, that we want to develop fluent readers who comprehend across a wide variety of texts, and we close achievement gaps across demographics. So, goal number one, goal number one is, was training our teachers in structured literacy methods. And what goal number one looked like, 323 BPS educators all successfully completed our Phase One learning. Our Phase One learning was OLA, O-L-L-A, Online Language and Literacy Academy. 323 educators included all of our district and school leaders, all of our K4 teachers responsible for core instruction, our special education teachers, K12, our multilingual teachers, K12, our reading interventionists. And then 5-6, grades 5-6, we focused, we included those teachers to those core teachers responsible for science, social studies, math, ELA. 323 teachers, educators successfully completed the course. That was more than 50-plus hours on average. Many educators, much more than those 50 hours. And what it focused on was really two pieces and how they came together. What do we know about the reading brain? And then how do we best facilitate reading development based on what we know with the reading brain? So the idea of the reading brain and structured literacy, that was what we focused on. Nine modules to look at the entire reading brain and that structured literacy approach. When I think of our teachers, our teachers, they are hungry to do best by kids. When I think of their reflections over the year, constantly asking them for feedback systematically, but also one-on-one conversations, our teachers can't wait to take these 50-plus hours of learning and start making it happen in the classroom. And what they want more than anything, they want to be effective every single day using this new learning. They want to be consistent across their grade, and they want to vertically be consistent. So I'm going to be awesome every day, second grade, just like the other second grade teacher. And then I'm going to make sure I send them off to third grade, so that teacher knows the skills that her students has and can continue to build on that. So I'm really proud of our teachers and the direction that we're headed. We had a group come together this summer specifically for making that transfer. We've done the learning. Now how do we actually move this forward into what classroom instruction needs to look like? So they looked at the Minnesota standards. What does that mean for kinder and this aspect of the reading brain? And what does that mean for best instruction across every kinder classroom? So that's the work that we're in the midst of. We are in a feedback loop with various leaders, and then we're going to come back together, this group, based on their feedback, and start moving into recommendations of what does that mean for classroom instruction? What does that mean for supporting our teachers so that they can take all of this learning and start putting it into action? I'll pause after Goal One. Any thoughts, questions, or needs that I can address?
Is that going to happen this fall?
That teachers start putting the learning into action?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
Yep, we're really excited. There, right now, we're referring to them as recommendations, and we have recommendations for every grade level, K, we're looking at K4 especially, because we want 5-6 teachers as an ELA department to be part of that journey. But K4, for them to be able to say, here's our recommendations for the different aspects of the reading brain, and this is what this looks like based on the learning everyone had.
ELA, English learning?
Yes. Yep. So in grades 5-6, they specifically have an ELA class, an English class. And so that's why we want to make sure that we have all of the voices for 5-6 ELA there. Whereas K4, can't have 200 teachers in a room to make a recommendation for, you know, one specific piece. So that's why we have this summer literacy group of teacher leaders together.
I might have missed it. You might have said it, Melissa. What's the summer literacy group?
Yeah. So we invited, I appreciate that question, Director Ward. We invited teacher leaders, kindergarten through sixth grade, teachers who were part of that 50-plus hours of learning. We invited teacher leaders to take the learning, look at the Minnesota standards, and make recommendations of, this is the goal we have for the end of each grade level. This is what we know success is going to look like. This is what best instruction looks like, based on all of that learning.
How many kids are participating?
It's only teacher leaders.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. But it will, to that question, it will influence every single kid, K4, and moving into that 5-6, when we bring that 5-6 ELA team together.
Thank you.
All right, goal number two, solidify our MTSS, especially with that idea of assessment, and being able to bring in what we learned from Goal One, the Tier One practices. So we have now a solid pre-K through 12th grade assessment system. You have that link there, so you can see what that looks like, looking at fall, winter, spring, looking at being in compliance with state recommend, state requirements, and being able to be systematic with learning about our students and doing best by our students. We have a K3 testing team. The K3 testing team ensures consistency, and thinking about just how we're using our resources. We had 94% participation in our reading assessments this year. So that increased consistency of, if we want to do best by students, we have to know and understand our students, and having a solid assessment system so that we can learn about our students and do best by students. This then allows for that database decision-making. So for example, when I think of MTSS Elementary, really tightening up that MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support, and what are we looking at when we look at Tier One to Tier Two interventions, and then moving into further decision-making? When I think of, for example, sitting with a grade-level team, that grade-level team with the principal, with the interventionists, you have your grade-level teachers there, and really looking at their data. So back to that first bullet, being able to look at their data, and first look at, what does my whole class need? How can I do better by my whole class, based on what the data says, based on what I'm learning from our OLA? And then starting to think of, what are some small groups I can do within class, and who might need more? When I think of database decision-making two, I also think of BLC, that they were taking that same approach, looking at their data and being able to think of Tier Two interventions. And I know also, as we think forward, that Forest View and Brainerd High School, starting to look at, how are we really making sure we're making data-informed decisions when it comes to literacy?
And the data comes from FastBridge?
Yes. Yep. That's, and I should say, yes, and, that, for example, when I was thinking of that team that I was working with, it was a first-grade team, and they had, in front of them, they had the FastBridge data, but then they also had other indicators to be able to say like, yep, that checks out. I saw this when, when I did this assessment in my classroom, too. That's part of our, our summer group, too, is being able to say, here's FastBridge. Do we feel like we need another data point that can help us do best by students? Thank you. The last bullet there is be, being consistent with family communication. So as we look at this data, how are we making sure that we're keeping families involved in the communication of, of where's their child, and what does their child need, and how are we going to do best by their child? I'll pause before going to Goal Three. Questions, thoughts, comments?
So are we going to get, like, can we get the student outcome every month at how this is working for the students? Or you're just going to give it, like, fall, well, probably winter?
Yes. So Director Ederman, that, my understanding is that Director Lundgren is going to bring you the data every fall, winter, spring.
Okay.
So if you click on, it's actually on the next slide, that data is the data that she shared with you just in June.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Yep. So, so yeah, making sure that you see the data, and we can be looking at that data. One of the things that we will have access to is being able to look across demographics. So that's going to change when we look at our, with our data warehouse change.
Is it possible, and this might be a question for Christina, is it possible to get a monthly update as far as kind of how things are looking? Or don't you look at FastBridge that, that often?
So we only assess in FastBridge, fall, winter, spring.
Which is good.
But, but aren't you looking, I mean, my understanding with FastBridge is that, let's say you've got some kids, they're falling behind, because we put the assessment stuff in FastBridge, right?
So I think what you're referring to, we, we assess every student, fall, winter, spring. And then there are students who might be receiving interventions and that progress monitoring data. When I think of that data, my hesitation with that, that data, is that data is indicative of only those students who are being progress monitored, and not indicative of the whole. I will say that our teachers, our teachers are amazing, and, and they are keeping a monthly pulse on, are my students making the expected gains?
I'm just talking about data.
Yeah.
That's all I'm doing. You know, is there a trend line? Are we seeing this, you know? My gosh, you know, September was really a good month. First month was, yeah, pretty good month. October, yeah, things got, you know, that's, that's all I was really looking at, is, is there some sort of a trend line?
There wouldn't be related to FastBridge, because it is only fall, winter, spring, that we don't assess every student using FastBridge, September, October, November, and so on. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, so goal number three, really that idea of developing readers, readers who comprehend, they are fluent, they have solid foundational skills, can do that reading work across a variety of texts, and specifically thinking about closing achievement gaps across demographics. So like I said, you have the link to the data there that you saw in June. Every school had a literacy goal this past school year, as part of their SIP, their continuous improvement plan. Specifically, as, as a big picture, we focused in on K4 word study, and especially K4 word study. K4 word study is thinking about your phonics, thinking about your vocabulary, thinking about, we, we talk phonemic awareness, and that's really the, the sounds we hear when we hear a word. So if I say cat, and I say, how many sounds you hear in cat, you go cat, right? That's a key skill that a kindergartner needs to develop. And so that idea of K4 word study, are those foundational skills? And so that was in place, and now being able, this past year, to hold that up next to that structured literacy that they were learning through their 50-plus hours of that Phase One Read Act learning. 912 ELA, you hear, you heard me along with my colleagues that we brought that to you with our journey of what is best instruction. 512 Special Education, specific to literacy, they implemented Language Live. And I remember a teacher who was actually at the done, at the end of her OLA journey, her 50-plus hours, and, and she pulled me over, and she's like, Melissa, we got to talk Language Live. And I was like, I'm curious where this is going to go. Do not take that away. We are making huge gains. It totally aligns to OLA and what we're learning with OLA, and we are so excited that we are doing really well in our data with our students who are receiving special education services.
Melissa, what is Language Live?
Great question. So Language Live is, it's a, a reading intervention, and I'm going to be careful, so I'll, I'll invite anyone to chime in. But it is a very structured reading intervention. With that reading intervention, it really does look at the entire reading brain. So it's doing the cat, right? But it also, because it's 512, it's also having them, the book holes is an example. It's also a movie, so that young adult novel holes. So you really have the whole range of, let's build these foundational skills that students might have missed in their earlier years, or just need more, more repetition with. And so as we're building that, we're also getting exposed to vocabulary, we're getting exposed to grade-level texts, comprehension strategies, both targeted in individualized. So there's an individualized component to it, but then there is also the whole class instruction to make sure, are we actually exposing students to the skills that are going to move them to grade-level outcomes? Great question. All right, disciplinary literacy. Disciplinary literacy is specifically being able to read like a scientist. And so if I think of even just what I, what I witnessed over the past hours, we, we read as educators. That's who you have been these past hours, and the people who spoke to you. We read different research as educators. Some people read from a policy lens, some people read from a finance lens, some people read from a teacher lens, and being able to read from a specific lens, that's what we're doing as we get into the upper grades, is can you read as a scientist? Can you make an argument as a scientist compared to making an argument as a historian? So that's disciplinary literacy. What I appreciate from the past year is leaders within my office, they were skilled up, so they completed the OLA learning, too, the 50-plus hours. So for example, Sandy Taudjes, who you've gotten to meet, when she's had something related to Acomp or PLCs, and they're talking literacy, she has a good handle on it, and then she's able to tie me in for the work of that PLC or that individual teacher. So here are some examples of supporting disciplinary literacy across the various content areas. I worked with a CTE PLC, and being able to talk about, what does reading look like in the career, the technical, the engineering fields? Worked with a science PLC. That science PLC, they actually videotaped me, so that they could see what is best instruction look like, and be able to reflect on it when they ask their science students to read in the classroom. Social studies, social studies, I worked with our Sourcewell partner as a 512 lens, that what does disciplinary literacy look like, 512 social studies? And then even bringing this into K4 science. And so that idea of, if we are asking them to read as scientists in elementary school, how does that look, and how does that pair with OLA? I'm going to pause there. What questions can I answer?
So this K4 word study stuff, is this all part of the Read Act? Or were we doing this before, or it's just got a new name?
Yeah, so this, the, my understanding of the process is that, starting about two, three years ago, noticing that we needed to do better specifically with those foundational skills. So like, the phonemic awareness, sounding, being able to hear the sounds, the phonics, the fluency. I wouldn't say that that's because of the Read Act. That was happening in Brainerd Public Schools, because we noticed that there was an area we needed to do better on. When I think of the Read Act, the Read Act is saying very much, we need When I think of the READ Act, the READ Act is saying very much, we need to understand the entire reading brain and we need to implement structured literacy. And so that I'd say that we were actually on that journey, which brought us to the Phase One READ Act learning of now, we were starting to get that in place. Now we have all of that learning of what is actually best instruction look like that we should be building our Word Study on.
Let me go to Phase Two.
So when I think of Phase Two, there's two ways you could think of Phase Two. Phase Two, in terms of the READ Act, is looking at those other grades. So what other students, teachers need to be skilled up in structured literacy? When I think of those teachers who have done Phase One, that's where we're moving into the summer recommendation, that summer team where we're not just learning, we're starting to implement. So formally, Phase Two READ Act is all the other teachers. When I think of the work we're doing right now, it's also how do we actually move our learning into implementation in the classroom?
Gotcha.
Other questions, insights? All right, here's where we're going. So our goal for the years ahead or for this year, what you're going to notice is those three goals at their core stayed the same, but that they almost like the next step with that goal. So if you look at that first goal, we're still talking structured literacy. The goal last year was the learning of it. Now the goal this year is that implementation. And that's where you see the, the recommendations from the summer group. When I think of Goal Two, Goal Two, really thinking K-12, so Brainerd High School, I know that I started to work with Andrea Rusk of what would Tier Two Intervention look like, literacy-related during their win time. We built it into the Forest View schedule that we automatically have this time built in. So being able to, now that we have solid assessment data in place, really being able to think K-12, what is best instruction for every kid? And then which students need more and how do we identify that and be systematic with that? And then the last goal, being able to look at data across demographics and continuing to make that part of every school has a literacy goal so we can continue to focus on doing best by students. What questions can I answer?
I think you covered it all.
My goal is to be comprehensive.
You got it. I'll make a motion that we accept this deal.
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion by Director Donderlinger, a second by Director Ederman to approve the Brainerd Public Schools Comprehensive Literacy Plan as presented. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have an update on the ten-year LTFM and then an approval of that ten-year LTFM plan. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back and welcome, Jeff.
I know we went through this, through the work session, so we can be brief. The first document is the revenues. I can pull it up if needed. And these are MDE forms, just a reminder. The ADMs are updated, or APUs, sorry, are updated. And then we verify the debt service payments. And then now that we qualify for the 1A funding, we can match or make the expenses match the revenues. So when you pull up the other document, the LTFM expenditures, this is a summary of all of our projects for the upcoming year and those should match. So revenues match expenses. And just want to note the total expenses. You can see for this next year are going to be about four point five and five point four for twenty-seven and twenty-eight fiscal years. And then they drop, but like I said, it's, we just need more time to finalize projects. So I don't want you to think that that's a, doesn't show the need. There's still a need, it's just we need to finalize more projects.
Anything you want to add?
No, you spoke very well, thank you.
Jeff, what is, what is professional services and salary?
Professional services salary, that is?
Engineers and stuff, what is it?
Oh, it's, it's, could be that, it could be, it's mostly my salary.
Million bucks a year, you got to get a gig going.
How much is it?
No, it's your, it's your.
Oh, sorry, it's, it's the engineer.
It's the engineers, yeah. Engineers on staff.
Oh, the ones that we have working for us?
Yes, yep.
So we can expend some payroll to this?
Yes.
Correct.
As long as they're doing LTFM work, yep.
That helps us.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of ways we're going to have to dig into this and I think we can be very creative with how we spend it, not only on projects, but on payments.
Gotcha. That's a good deal there.
So the state doesn't tell us how to spend?
No.
Good.
Nope. No, there are rules we have to follow, but they're obviously, you know, we can ask for assistance when needed. There's a lot, there's a lot of different ways to, to use the money.
All right, to look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Director Heidemann, a second by Director Ward. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thanks, you guys.
Thanks.
Next up, we have approval of the third and final reading of Policy 512.
Hello.
Hello, Director Lundgren.
So again, five twelve, this is our third time coming to the board for the final approval. And on the table is to adopt the MSBA Model Poly, Policy Language. And then we moved Article Four and Article Six from our current policy as appendices, which outlined two procedures.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Director Donderlinger, a second by Director Brecken. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we move on to informational. There is a section on here for a work session report, being that we are all there, I won't belabor the point, but I would just give an update, a general update for the public that we have combined our committee meetings into work sessions. So it was the Finance Committee and the Policy Committee that met and then we had some work session discussion following that. And those discussions are all in that report. All right, Superintendent Grant.
Want to thank Marcy and Jason for digging into the data stuff. Jason opened the door and like Marcy said at the work session, now she's got a new home to live in. But more importantly, the best thing I can say is we now have a new high school principal. Terry Bowser. Terry Howser. Bowser.
Carrie Bowser.
Carrie.
Carrie.
I get Carrie and Carrie.
Bozer, I think, yeah.
Bozer.
Yeah.
So she agreed Friday?
I know what, high school principal.
So we have a new high school principal.
That was the last name?
Yeah.
Carrie Bozer.
She comes from Sauk Rapids, Rice.
But she was in, she was in the district.
There's a lot of Bozers down in.
She's in our district.
Oh, she was in.
She was in the district for a number of years.
She was in Pierce?
Then she was in Pierce.
As a principal and then she went to Sauk Rapids, Rice. Okay. Teacher and director of teacher and learning and then she's back here because she was here in two thousand, two thousand and five, I think. Okay. So we have it done.
Great.
She was a, a player of the district, is that what I heard?
Yes.
At the high school or where?
Yep, I think she was assistant principal of the high school.
Yeah, high school.
Dean of students.
The dean of students, maybe, yeah.
Is she a Bozer, you say?
That's her last name.
Yeah, okay. Well, there's lots of them.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was curious about.
Okay, I didn't know what that meant.
Oh, it's off topic.
Your last name?
That's what I thought he said, but he, I tried to get the first name figured out.
I make a motion, oh, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, we've got a motion by Director Brecken, a second by Director Ederman. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we set a date for maybe a special meeting? So we can, I mean, Director Donderlinger brought up at the July meeting, no, the June meeting.
It's been June, this is the July.
About getting together and start looking at our budget stuff. Seeing what happened tonight, I think, I think it's imperative that we meet sooner than later, so I'm just throwing it out to you, Madam Chair, because, you know, you, you have talked to Peter and do it, I'm just maybe suggesting we do it sooner than later, that's all.
Do you want to do it before our August second or seventh work session?
Why don't we make that the work session?
We could.
Oh.
Is, is that soon enough?
Make sure Marcy's there.
Yeah, I got another wedding, I can't do anything before the next one. So I said the seventh would look good.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't do it before.
No.
I got to go to August, gosh.
Well, let's make that.
Just throw it out there.
An integral part of that work session. Yeah, we might have to extend the time. Okay. All right, any further discussion?
Just one of the things I proposed about the work sessions because we have student representatives, if we could, like if we start our meeting at eight thirty, from eight thirty to nine fifteen, maybe we invite the two students on that committee and then nine fifteen to ten and that, that gives us a half an hour at the end.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
So that student doesn't have to sit there. And they're not, yeah, it's not.
Yeah, for that kid that he likes to take care of.
Yeah, yeah.
And it makes us stay on track with our agenda.
Yeah, that will help us, yes.
All right, yeah, I see. That's right, I'll just say.
Thank you for bringing that up. Kelly, you've got that though too, right? Okay. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of adjourn, say aye.